Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is ten oh one. We are a little bit late here this morning. I'm going to call order the Board of County Commissioners' April 25th meeting, regular board meeting. At this time, if I could get, Mr. Bob Parker, could you lead us in the salute to the flag, please, sir? Since you're standing already.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. All right. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marcia Burke Bigler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Von Hartung.
Here.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager John Slaughter.
Present.
Assistant District Attorney Paula Pirelli.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate it. Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to this beautiful Tuesday in April. It's a little bit warmer than it was yesterday. At this time, we will go to public comment. So, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item is limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commissioner will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. And please, comments should be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much. All right. At this time, we will call, I'm going to call public comment. And then I'll also call the next person in line to queue up behind the current speaker. So first up, we have Ms. Tammy Holt Still, and then followed by Ms. Donna Peterson.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Holt Still provided a document to me for the board, and I'll distribute it and put it on the record.
Thank you. Good morning.
(Inaudible) still. Chair Lucy, I'd like to thank you for coming out again to take a look at our area and survey what's going on. I appreciate that. As you still know, I don't know if you drove by, but the Silver Lake area still has water and the state sewer plant are still putting a whole bunch of water into our lake, which we really don't need. And I think that's something that needs to be looked at. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Herman for getting Tom Waugh and TMRPA to do what Washoe County should have been doing, which was evaluate and map the inflows into Lemon Valley Lake and the other North Valley lakes. So, thank you on that one.
(Inaudible).
I know I've been doing my stats out there on a regular basis and charting so that we have information. I do agree with Commissioner Herman as far as waste management for the rural areas. It's got to go. We need competition out there. We are spending way too much money for less service, and I don't think that's correct just because of single, whatever it's called, single-stream recycling. May be great, but it's not, it's not worth the money that we're spending. I look forward to you guys voting and supporting the yellow-tag and red-tag homes, being able to do their permitting. Due to that, due to them having the flooding issues they have, I've seen the value of my home and depreciate. And I'd like to see our area built back up again so the appreciation of my home goes back up. I've put a lot of time and effort into it. We both have, I should say, my husband also. We need to stop building out there. There's still building going on. It's time for it to stop. There's no reason to give any more permits until things are fixed. Adding more buildings to previous grounds so that we can't get the saturation that we need to get the water away is not going to do any of us any good. It's got to stop. So, stop with the personal and the money and ideas, and let's get, get the area cleaned up and back up where it should be for the residents that live out there. Speaking of that, I also noticed that this weekend, I had mosquitoes on my screens. So, I'd like to know when Washoe County is going to step up to the plate and start spraying because it's getting to the point that if you guys wait any longer, we're not going to have any. And then also, full disclosure again is being requested. It has been in writing besides here and in my voice, but also by email, that the full disclosure on the amount of expenditures for the emergencies that were declared, and I hope to see these topics taken care of that I have mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Still. All right. Next, we have Mrs. Donna Peterson, and then after her will be Ms. Nicole Harris.
Good morning. I'm Donna Peterson. I live in St. James's Village. I'm here to urge the board to take all necessary and preventive actions to reduce fire risk in our forested areas. I'll speak on waste management issues again later, but right now, I wanted to address citizen fears of continuing the past practice of issuing burn permits in Galena Forest or any of the forested areas. No doubt, we need to reduce yard waste and potential fuel, hence the overwhelming concerns with Waste Management's new discouraging, dis punitive program. However, I believe we have long since passed the time when allowing residents to burn brush on their properties is safe. There's no way anyone can guarantee a safe burn under the best of conditions. We've learned this lesson time and time again, as early as last fall with the Little Valley Fire. If the experts can't get it right, how and why should we trust individual judgment? I've been told there are some locations where burning to reduce brush may be warranted, but densely forested areas with no agricultural demands really cannot be one of them. This board has the power, authority, and responsibility to implement safe and sound practices to support residents in reducing yard waste and minimizing fuel risk. Please act quickly before fire season is aggressively upon us and stop issuing burn permits in areas such as Galena Forest with high fire risk, dry brush, and quickly changing wind conditions. I fear with the combination of the Waste Management program that reduces and discourages yard waste and some burning, some who are seeing additional burning as a solution, we are creating a perfect firestorm environment. History has shown that no fire is ever completely under control. This is a risk we do not need and should never have to take. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Next, Ms. Nicole Harris.
Good morning. I'm a new resident here, and I love it here. I think it's wonderful. We moved in here into Galena Forest area the last weekend in November. We moved from Palm Springs, California, as a desert rat. Now, we are now snow bunnies. One of the concerns I have is obviously the Waste Management issue. I hope you move it to the first item as there probably is a lot of anxious participants here who would like to speak on it. When I moved into the area, I was new. We didn't know anything except we would have to live differently. I got the cars in the garage, and then I joined the group called Next Door. I hope you are aware of it. It's very useful. And I was made aware of this Waste Management situation. I want to share with you that I've called Waste Management three times, and the answers I get are unsatisfactory. I have notes to document when I call and who I talk to. The answers I get depends on who's staffing the phone and what day of the week it is. I've gotten so many different answers, I'm not sure what I should be doing. However, when I called about the excess sticker, I was made to be felt like I am the wrong person to call. Are you sure you didn't get it? We mailed it to you. I go, what is the address? Well, I'll call you back. You let me know. March 31st was the deadline. I didn't even know we had to go call in to be on the list. Again, recycling bins, I had no idea. Some bins were delivered one day, some bins were not delivered. I don't even know when they were going to be picked up. So, it's word of mouth. That is very unsatisfactory, and I believe the county deserves more than that. I looked at the staff recommendation. That is a boilerplate, making everybody happy. Sounds good. My concern is when and where and what are the metrics to hold individuals and companies accountable? We in the force are doing what we can do. I do not believe burn permits should be given. I certainly am not going to be applying for it. I don't even know what to do. And God forbid if we have another fire there. We already have one incident there. And then we have the bears that came. We already have two incidents of bears visiting our neighborhood. Therefore, I learned I will not be putting out my trash the night before. I will be doing it in the morning. These kinds of tips and hints should be made known to individuals who come to our neighborhood. I'm new. There are lots of individuals who have moved in, and really, the communications need to be improved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next, we'll have Mr. Rick Snow.
Rick Snow, Washoe Valley resident. Thank you for hearing me this morning. I've been before this board for approximately 16 months through three commissioner chairs, and the problem we have out there is still continuing. We went through code compliance as requested. They did their work. It goes to supervisor. She did her work. Goes up to Mr. Bob Webb. He did what he could do. Goes over to compliance and, or, excuse me, collections. They do what they can do. Now, it's sitting on the desk of the manager up there, and still, we haven't come to a resolution. If they can't do anything about it, then why do we need these people that are on the payroll? If there's nothing that can be done, then there's no need of having these people. We can use the office space, the computers, and the revenues to better availability. I don't want to see that because I feel code compliance is very necessary to keep things out of control. But they have to have something that lets them dictate these people that they have to comply, or there's going to be a consequence instead of just letting it continue. Let's lead, follow, get out of the way, and let's make this thing happen. The address is 275 Magnolia, and it burned out on the 14th day of February two years ago. I think two years is plenty of time to get this thing taken care of. I would expect some action on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Next, we have Mr. William Pootch.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Mr. Manager. My name is William Pootch, and I reside at 2725 Everett Drive in northwest Reno. By now, or by my emails, you are well aware of my dilemma, having an illegally partially constructed billboard that stands as a blight adjacent to my and my neighbors' homes in the parcel of Mountain View Cemetery north of Interstate 80. I call it a billboard because that's exactly what it is. You all know by what I have sent you by email that Judge Miranda Doos' court ruling, the Facebook post by Mountain View Cemetery, and by Channel 8 story last month, that this is all part of a concerted effort of Jeffrey and Alan Harrison of Strict Scrutiny Media to construct illegal billboards as a mean of initiating frivolous litigation in order to have a chilling effect on billboard ordinances. And let's be clear, these are not going to be on-premise signs advertising the cemetery in the Odd Fellows Hall. These are intending to be billboards, nine of them, in fact, along I-80 if they get their way. In essence, they are intentionally breaking the law in an attempt to stop laws that protect our scenic views and our property values. It has been about a month and a half since the deadline issued by your code enforcement department for corrective action on the sign, and I have not received a word of any progress. Meanwhile, the city of Reno looks like they are on the verge of having their lawsuit with strict scrutiny thrown out on the two other illegal signs. And the city's attorney's office has been very supportive of our plight, but I've heard nothing from the county. And so, all due respect, am I left to conclude by the silence that strict scrutiny and their accomplices in crime? And I do say crime because their activity is illegal at Mountain View Cemetery. Have they won? My neighbors and I would like to see some action here as we are the victims of this illegal activity. We ask that you do what you promised in your oath to serve and protect. Until then, I will continue to stand here banging my drum and pleading that you take the sign down. Taking my cues from Sam Dene, take the sign down. Do I really have to go on and on? I know this is dramatic, but we would like to get it taken down. Please have your district attorneys or your code enforcement enforce the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pootch.
And, Mr. Pootch, may I please have the photo? I'm over here.
Sure.
The county clerk, the photo for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
I could never do Sam just.
Next, we'll have Ms. Ellen Lutz. Ellen Lutz.
A little louder.
Ms. Ellen Lutz. Is there a Ms. Lutz? Mr. Lutz? No, it was Mrs. Go. All right. All right. Seeing nothing, I'll move on to Mr. Steve Hilton.
My name is Steve Hilton, and I'm a longtime resident of Lemon Valley. I'm here about the amendment for the development of 208 acres above Patrician Drive.
I'm going to have to move this around a little bit. Actually, let's start with the sewage treatment plant. Mr. Dawson, is that correct? You, sir? Your name?
Duane Smith.
Duane Smith. I spoke with him yesterday. He assured me, this is the original sewer plant with the...
Sir, can you dress and the microphone so we can get it on the record, please? Thank you.
This is the original sewer plant with the holding ponds. Been there for 40 years. Now... You see the yellow dot right there? That is what's left of the treatment plant itself. The rest is underwater. All the holding tanks in the previous picture are gone. Mr. Smith, I spoke with him yesterday. He said these are unnecessary, and he's going to school us all on why. And how come this water mixing with the lake doesn't really matter? Because right now, you're at max capacity of 300,000 gallons per day. Meters have just been put in all the septic, on all the sewers going to the lake. Unnamed employees tell me you couldn't build another house there if you want to, but you still want to build, you want to develop 208 acres above Patrician Drive. Egress from this will be Patrician, Palace, and Bonelli Lane. This is the top of Patrician Drive, which is a windy, blind-curved road all the way down. I'm out of time already. Thanks for the three minutes. Anyway, it dead ends into a school. The other one dead ends into a flood zone. There's no streets. There's no sidewalks. There's no streetlights. The children go up and down these all the time. He says it can handle the traffic. It cannot. I'll be back for the next, next deal here. Three minutes are ridiculous. At least the city of Reno gives you seven or six. You can't get your name out in three minutes.
Mr. Hilton, if you're finished, I need to have your pictures for the record.
Thank you.
I will wish picking on number 17 also. So, would you like them then, or would you like them now?
I will need to take them now, and then we'll listen to you again on 17 if you need to put them on.
Okey-dokey.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Next, we have Mr. Levi Hooper. Mr. Hooper?
Hello, Commissioners. I am Levi Hooper. I am the voice of the downtrodden. I've been in Reno for many years, five years of the, five of those years I was homeless. I was the challenger to County Commissioner, District 1, this last electorate. I was predicted 10%, and I got 44% and 21,000 votes. So, I figured 21,000 votes made me, makes means that 21,000 people thought I should be here speaking, so I'm here speaking. I just wanted to bring up the fact that the homeless in town again are coming into summer, and summer's one of the hardest, believe it or not, one of the hardest seasons to get through for the homeless because of dehydration. Dehydration in this town is worse. I'm from Palm Beach, Florida, actually, where it's pretty darn hot, but it's not like the dry heat here. And it's a killer. It's a killer here. Winter's bad, but summer's could be even worse. But I'm always looking for help with water and any ideas towards recycling water bottles. And we have an issue downtown right now with the homeless and the recycling. Unfortunately, as much as we can feed with packaging and stuff, it ends up on the ground. So, I don't know if there's some way we can set up recycling dumpsters down there or some kind of labeling system where I can label water bottles with the fact to recycle after they use them or something. I don't know. Along those lines, I want to thank Commissioner for donating money towards my cause today. That's just another big thing. I have a minute twenty left to talk about the jail. A couple of years before I met Sam Dene, and he helped me get off the streets, I was arrested for panhandling. And not even panhandling, but holding a sign up saying I was starving and wanted to work. So, I was trying, so I just wanted to say that that jail up there is really, really dysfunctional. I still am traumatized to this day. I have nightmares two, three days a week because of that jail. And so, I just really wanted to bring up is that that really needs to be looked into. It almost brings me to tears remembering it. But anyways, that's all I have to say. I just want a few things in this town to be changed, the homeless, and that's all. I just need a little bit of help with water, and I have it here. So, that's all I have to say, really. I don't know if you guys can maybe, you guys all have my phone number still, still the same thing and everything. And I just really appreciate this time to speak and being able to come here and express myself emotional. Sorry, messed up thoughts, you know? But that jail is really messed up. Just please, please fix it. But that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Next, we have Mr. Sam Dene.
Sam Dene. Sam DNA Dene. That's me. The DNA, nice smiley face over there. The DNA of Reno government, the heart and soul, body and mind of Reno government. Last week, I had seven walk-off homers here at this podium and three perfect games, and I was going to take the week off, but I'm reading my favorite, my favorite Reno Gazette whack-a-freak newspaper this morning, and it inspired me, and I had to forget about, nice smiley face over there. I had to forget about the walk-off homers. I'm down here, maybe I'll get in, three more perfect games. At any rate, before I go any further, this operation here, it's small potatoes, but it's unprofessional. You people are unprofessional, and I'll blame it on Mr. Slaughter and Mr. Lucy. The sign-in operation up there is an absolute gaggle for everybody. It's wrong. You go up and try and sign in up there. People lined up, no place to write. It's dark, and that leads into the next one. If you could put the cameras back here, these people are all in the dark. I know they're in the dark all the time anyway, but you put them in the dark, nice smiley face over there. You're putting them in the dark. What if they wanted to take notes? I was trying to take notes you can't see down there. It's wrong. And on top of that, you spent a million dollars on new chairs that we don't, didn't need. The old chairs were perfect. These are, I tell you, they're, they're sexual harassment. How about we say that? They're sexual harassment against, nice smiley face over there. The seats are not comfortable. They are not ergonomically proper. Last but not least, the jail. The jail. Looking at this thing here, and the Reno Gazette whack-of-freaks just can't get off of this jail case. Nobody wants to go to jail. I agree. Jail is not a good place to be, and bad things happen in jail. Bad things happen in jail. I guarantee it. So, the sheriff here, I don't want to have his back particularly. He's a good man, Sheriff Allen. He's taking the brunt of all of this stuff because some people have died in jail. The media mouses back there and up there everywhere, they've got so many issues they should be working on, so many issues they should be working on, ignoring, ignoring everything Sam has said for the last 25 years, his brilliant ideas. Me, I'm responsible for 92% of the good things about Reno. De facto, that's true because the media mouses who are supposed to write the truth should say, no, Sam, it's not 92%. It's only 91%. And now, the media whacko freaks want to blame the county commissioners. Why don't they blame Sam? I'll take the blame. Blame Sam for all of the problems. Please, just blame me for anything.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Just have the guts to write anything. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you over there, and thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Naomi Morgan.
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you? My name's Naomi Morgan, and I live in Galena Forest. I'm going to just read from my paper, or I will get lost. I've come to speak to you about the concerns I and my fellow neighbors have about Waste Management's new program, as others have today. Since its inception, this new program has distributed poor and confusing communication pamphlets, has cost customers more money for less trash pickup, has had company employees blatantly lie in their reporting systems regarding communication with customers, has inadvertently polluted as their new automatic trucks spill trash from each bin they tip over to empty, and has possibly created a danger of fires within many county communities. This information packet delivered to their customers, this right here, included 25 stickers to place on each trash bag filled with yard waste or extra trash, which exceeded the trash receptacle size. These stickers not only could easily be lost by residents, as they are to last a year, which would further incur costs to purchase more stickers, or they could fly off of bags they're placed on, polluting our streets and yards. But they are also not nearly enough to clear yard waste from our plots of land in Galena Forest, not to mention other Washoe Valley properties. One spring alone, we had filled 44 bags with pine needles, pine cones, and branches. At six bags a week, we were able to dispose of these bags safely in eight weeks. If the stickers were used, we would have had to purchase 19 more Snicker, stickers at $2.65 each, totals at least $50 extra paid for spring alone. The extra money can be a deterrent to property owners to dispose safely of their yard waste. Why Waste Management is charging customers more money to remove less waste is nonsensical. After calling three times regarding waste bin sizes and leaving messages requesting a response from Waste Management and still receiving no reply, I headed downtown to their payment office to see if I could speak to someone live to answer my question. In reviewing my account, the receptionist explained a note was written by a manager stating a phone call was made to my cellphone answering my question. I had never received a call from Waste Management, nor a voicemail explaining the answer. If Waste Management is changing their fees without explaining this fully, the change fully to customers, they should at least have a competent call center which can answer any questions posed by their customers. I have 44 seconds. Each weekday morning, I walk my dog through our neighborhood, not only for her health, but mine as well. Each Monday, we encounter bits of trash on the streets. That's our trash day. Or in the gutters from the Waste Management trucks just missing that last bit of trash or recycling after tipping the bins into their trucks. When there were two employees driving a truck, messes were rarely left behind. Now, unfortunately, it's a common occurrence in our neighborhood. It's unsightly and a danger to wildlife. Please consider my concerns of weekly additional bag pickups of yard waste or an optional green bid for yard waste, a choice of trash bin size even in communities outside of the city, and to suggest to Waste Management that their call centers be better informed and empowered to answer customer questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Next, I have Mr. David Hall and Ms. Tracy Hall.
Hi, my name is Tracy Hall, and I am a resident of Lemon Valley. And we are currently misplaced out of our home. And I understand you guys are going to talk about waiving the permit fees to rebuild, but our concern is, are we going to be able to go home? We have a 10-acre parcel right on Pompey, so our property is right along Swan Lake. When I called in January, I was informed, because people that live out there know that lake, and it was going to come up fast on us. And we knew it was going to be a record year. We're going to get a lot of weather. They told pretty much, the gentleman that said this to me is in the room, I am not going to drop a name, but I was very offended because we were told it was a bad investment to buy that home there. Well, we inherited that home due to a death in our family. That home is paid for. Our concern is, is there going to be something done for us out there? So if we have another winter like this, it's not going to come up on us again? Because if somebody had come out in January and just evaluated our situation like I had asked, instead of telling me, "Pack your animals up, move yourself, because you are going to flood," it would have been just, you know, maybe a little bit more heartfelt instead of saying it was a bad investment, you need to leave because you are going to flood. Maybe come out instead and see if there's a situation we can do to prevent this from us leaving our home. You know, that being said, I am going to say thank you for what the county has done. Social services has been amazing for us. They put us in a nice little home, but we don't even know if we're going to be able to come home. They put those barriers up. Our home is on the inside of those barriers. We are still taking on water. Some of those residents are getting better because they have pumped that water back over those barriers, but that water's coming to us on that side of the valley. We haven't seen anybody out there. Nobody's contacting us, saying we're working on a solution. We just want to know, if we go home, is this going to happen again? You know, because being told it was a bad investment, do we not matter out there at this point? That was my concern. And then if you guys do waive the permit fees for us to rebuild, is there a timeframe that they're only good for? Because like I said, we're still taking on water. In six months, we probably won't be home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Next, I have Mr. Danny Kleus.
My name is Danny Kleus. I live at 11630 Tupelo Street. Just the other day, I tracked a culvert coming from the sted area that is draining water into Swan Lake. It is being pumped from Silver Lake into Holding Ponds in the middle of the warehouse district and sted, which then goes into the drain system. It comes out at apartments right there by the sted treatment plant. Sted Treatment Plant is also dumping their treated water, which says it's unsafe, into Swan Lake. Just the other, last night, there's a guy that measures Silver Lake. It said it went down. Our lake went up. There's a problem there. With the building permit fees, we need to know the time limit. Because if there is one, my house isn't going to be rebuilt this year. It probably won't be rebuilt next year. That's the sad thing. Our insurances aren't working with us. I get denied for a second claim. I still have water underneath my house. Third issue. We haven't had a community meeting out there for a long time. Some people said one's coming up Saturday. Nobody else has heard that. We need answers, just like I asked you, Mr. Lucy. What are we going to do with the water? We're working on it. We've heard we're working on it since February. We don't know where that water's going. We don't know what's going to happen with that lake. Why do we want to invest in a community when we don't have the answers we need to know before we reinvest? I don't want to rebuild my house if it's going to happen again. Nobody wants their ditches to overflow again. You guys have funding for that. We haven't seen any work done out there to start trying to straighten up the ditches. I don't want to invest in my community if nothing's going to be done about this. Over the years, us residents know, when that lake fills up, it doesn't drain by September. It doesn't evaporate by September. We don't need a record-breaking year again to have that flood back into our yards again. Are those barriers going to be up for the next five, 10 years? We know if it fills up again, it's not going to drain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kleus. Next, we have Mr. Jeff Church.
For the record, Mr. Chair, Mr. Church has provided me with a document which I'll distribute to the board and put on the record.
Good morning. For the record, I am Jeff Church. I run a website, renotaxrevolt.com. Couple of things here, so many issues we'd like to cover, including Waste Management, and people aren't going to buy those stickers, they're going to dump in the desert is what's going to happen. But I want to talk a little bit, if you got your overhead work in, about Earth Day that just passed, an electric vehicle charging station. I came today in my electric vehicle, and there were five electric vehicles parked at your charging station, but there's only two ports to charge, which is two more than the city of Reno has. But my point is, whenever that can come up on the overhead, is that non-authorized vehicles park, oh, there you got it, I'm sorry, I'm looking over here. Non-authorized, thank you, John. Non-authorized vehicles do park in those charging stations around the county, and they park there with impunity because it's not illegal. So I'm asking you to consider a Earth Day-friendly county ordinance that would make it illegal, like some other states have, to park there to allow those vehicles to be sighted or towed. And that's it for Earth Day. I do want to bring to your attention also, and I know that's extremely hard to read, but that's a survey that we paid for, Washoe County paid for with our taxpayer dollars. And one of the questions that you hit on page five was what the citizens thought about Washoe County, specifically Washoe County, not Reno or other agencies. And under confidence in government, 37 percent had confidence in Washoe County government. 39 percent felt you were acting in the best interest of Washoe County. An amazing, only 41 percent believed that you were being honest. That's what, 59 percent that have an unfavorable honesty rating for Washoe County. I'm not trying to be critical. It's your survey, but I'm asking you to review that. I'm asking you to think about it. I'm asking you to take it to heart and possibly look to see how can we improve if actually almost 60 percent feel that we're not being honest with citizens. And you hear a lot of those people here today. So I did want to bring that to your attention. And the final thing is, there's a new plan for 600 homes called Ascente Development. It just came out April 17th. It's a rework on a previous plan up in Callahan Ranch. Again, 600 cluster homes in Callahan Ranch. So what I'm asking you to do is not skirt the cab process, because that's a brand-new plan. Don't take it straight to Planning Commission. It should go back to the cab so we can have our voice again before it goes to Planning Commission on the 600 homes in Callahan Ranch area. And once again, my website is renotaxrevolt.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Next, we have Ms. Patricia Puchard, I'm sorry if I...
Good morning. My name is Patricia Puchard, and I am the owner of 2725 Everett in Northwest Reno. I would like to echo some of the comments that my son William just mentioned, and would like to reiterate, The Mountain View Cemetery, along with Rogue Sign Company, is willfully and intentionally breaking the law. There are not supposed to be any more billboards in the county, period. While we can play legal games with wording, it is a structure. We all know that it was on its way to being a billboard, which is a crime according to the law. I ask you to direct your staff to enforce the law and take that sign down now. As I told you before, they literally built that sign overnight, and we woke up the next morning to blight staring us in the face from our living room window. I ask you to take a stand and not allow a precedent to be made to destroy our views and our property values just because an unscrupulous sign company makes bogus claims of their rights as free speech and equal protection that are being violated. It's an affront to us taxpayers that this rogue sign company be allowed to frivolously initiate lawsuits just to bully us so they can make a profit at our expense. We have lived in the shadow of blight for more than two months, and ask you to take action to remove that sign now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Puchard. Next, we have Ms. Carol Mansfield.
I'm Carol Mansfield. I also live on Everett Drive up in the old northwest. I overlook the cemetery pond. When we first moved in there, that pond almost overflowed. I called them up, it took them a week to fix the pond. What feeds the pond up there? The Highland ditch. The Highland ditch runs between the homes along there and the billboard. And we, I'm afraid people are going to, our neighborhood is getting angry. It's like a, I just can't explain it to you. You know, the whole, the whole country is edgy. Well, our neighborhood is edgy. We're tired of this. You've got to do something about it. Either the, you've got to get them to just take it down. That's all you have to do. There's four poles sitting up there. They're sitting on cement things. They put them in overnight. They don't have the crossboards up. Now, I've been over and talked to them. They said, "Oh, we don't know who did that. We didn't do it." Well, I saw them bring it in. Do you know how they got it in? Off of Seventh Street. They have a gate there, and they brought it in with a great big old black truck with the smoke coming out of the top, and it had the boards on the back, and it had all the material for the billboard on that truck. And guess who has the lock, the key to the lock on that gate? Mountain View Cemetery. And they say, "We don't know anything about it." So please, just tell the cemetery, they say it's county land. It's in the middle of the city, but it's county land. If you don't want to do it, tell them they'll have to become part of the city, and we'll go through the city. The city's going to ban them. We don't want to keep coming up here and wasting your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mansfield.
Good morning. Thank you for giving us the time today. My name is Ken Lutz. I live in Galena Forest. I was here in a past life when we were doing the thing on the marijuana thing here, so I appreciate all the work you did. I'm actually going to talk in two pieces here today. One piece about my background, so you could understand about the Waste Management piece, and the other piece later on is about the problem it's created up there. Waste Management's been a client of ours, and so I have done hundreds of city account plans. Ones the size of Miami or Chicago, or ones, I actually worked on the one that went on here. There's a gentleman here, and there's a gentleman in Sacramento that takes care of this thing. So I know the account pretty well. And I'm an outside person that works for them as a consultant. And so when this thing appeared, I got on the phone, called two people in Phoenix. For whatever reason, I'm lucky, I can get through and get ahold of people. Maybe it's because of what I do. And then I talked to two management people here in this area. One of them, the lady said to me, "You know, it works fine in Sparks and Reno." But she also, her boss said to me, "You've got a totally different situation up there, and we'd like to work with you." My experience with Waste Management is you can get them to work with, they want this account. We worked a long time to try and get this thing put together here. And I don't have any financial ties to this thing or anything else. It's just that when we talk about the problem later on here, which I'll do under number 20, this creates a real serious problem up there right now. And this is, this is not what Waste Management does. If you look at how they do single stream, if you look at how they do it across the country, I took a ride yesterday to other parts of this area that they service that have got their bags out there and everything. It's got the community pretty much tipped upside down up there, but I do think you can work with them to get some things to happen. And what I'd like to do when I come back is address the problem that exists with this and all that we've done with the fire department to try and keep our homes. And I know I can't talk to you to ask you questions, but I can ask you to think about three things. How many of you live above the tree line? How many of you have had to evacuate your house a couple of times in the last few years because of fire, especially with Mount Rose being closed off so we couldn't get out of there? And how many of you have gone to a fire meeting and gone through all the processes we have to do on how to evacuate that area? You've got two roads and 200-plus homes. Look forward to talking to you under number 20. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Next, we have Ms. Judy Hilton.
I'm Judy Hilton. I lived in Lemon Valley for 35 years. I'm also a Realtor. I understand the 750 acres that have been turned over to the city, which is owned by Lennar, which wants to build 5,000 houses. I don't live in the flood zone. I live on the hill, and I've watched the lake fill. Now they want to build 400 houses behind me? So you've got 5,000 houses, 400 houses, the backdoor deals with George Peak to build all the apartments? This is what our problem is. We don't have enough space for people to come in and out of the valley as it is, and you want to build thousands of houses? Where's the water going to go? Where's the people going to go? I live off of Patrician Drive. When I get to the end of my street, that's the school zone. Two lanes. Drive out there. See what happens in the school zone. You've got 400 houses being built on the hillside. To come down the road and hit the school zone? There's two ways in. Patrician and Palace. That's it. Where are the people going to go? There's no place for the roads. There's no water. There's no sewer. What are we going to do about that? Why did all of a sudden Pan America, the Pipkins, who had 20-acre parcel, be allowed to put 20 houses there? Because you allowed them to put the water base right behind them. It's the backdoor deals. George Peak, the Pipkins. Let's get rid of the backdoor stuff. Let's leave Lemon Valley alone and fix the problems. All the water draining into the lake is created by the backdoor deals with George Peak. Allowing him to build his complexes and allowing all the water to run in Lemon Valley Lake, that's never going to go away. Those people in the flatlands are ruined. What are we going to do with Lennar's 5,000 houses back there? What about those people?
Thank you, Ms. Hilton.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. I just moved out of the Donner Motel, and nothing was ever done to destroy that motel. They all live there, and I'm talking about the ones on death row. They still have to steal those rooms in order to get off the streets. It's been very cold, so they are now desperate to get off the streets and move into the Donner Rooms. But guess what? If there's not enough room for them over there, they are now in Sparks in that area. And they have been stealing homes. They steal our things from our homes, too. And I have an older lady that lives next door to me, and she had her things stolen out of her home. But they did not stop there. They also tortured her, and she has been tortured so badly that we can't even understand what she might look like the next day or even tomorrow. I'm asking you to help us here because even though you can't find the U.S. military, is that the problem? Well, who's gonna do the job, you know, to get rid of the people who are on death row? They set people on fire, and last night we had a fire very close to our homes, and somebody said that that was arsonist. And so I just wanted to let you know, this is still going on all over the cities, both Sparks and Reno, and we have not seen no, nothing done about it at all. They are forcing me to move out of there because they have no place to live for nothing. If they have nothing, they will try to get as much as they can to, you know, get themselves off the streets by robbing banks. And the bank robbers did hit last night. I lost my check. It blew out of my basket and into the street. Then the lady turned around and said the F-word to me, and she kept my check. Because she ran out of gasoline. She doesn't have no way to pay for her gas. And I, I am so tired of this. I don't know where they're coming from. Are you coming out of San Jose, California? Because this is exactly what took place in San Jose. I don't know who's gonna stop this. I can't seem to find the military because this morning, somebody said, "We are not responding at all."
And the audience would like to speak at this time. If not, we'll bring it back to the board. And Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, next item is item four, which is Commissioner County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, just as an announcement, I guess, under this item regarding the, the sign on the Mountain View Cemetery property, talking with staff during this process and was informed that there is an administrative penalty that has been assessed, and staff is working through that administrative enforcement process, and certainly staff DA's office is following the city's case. So there is action taking place on that particular issue.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Chair, do I have anybody signed in? Any of the commissioners signed in with announcements at this time? Commissioner Hartung.
Mr. Chairman, I neglected to push the button. I apologize. A couple of requests. Mr. Smith, for our planning staff, I'd like to try to get a timeline on the upgrades that we plan on doing on Caide La Plata and Pyramid. Just sort of get a feel for that. I continue to get complaints. I don't want to say daily, but I do continue to get complaints. And then I would also like to follow up with Nicole, just a timeline on, on some of the things that we can possibly do and how we can start on Nicole Drive. And then, Mr. Manager, you and I talked about this, we've talked about it actually for a long time, well over, much more than a year, and that is the duties of the commissioners. What are our responsibilities? I've asked for us to have a list and actually put it on the website, the duties and the responsibilities, not just the assigned boards and commissions that we serve on, but what are the duties and responsibilities of commissioners and, you know, potentially statutorily. There's probably 50 volumes of statutes. I've not read them. It's not casual reading for me, and many times when I do read them, I literally don't understand exactly what I'm reading. I require the assistance of an attorney. I'd like to know if I can gallop my horse across the Lake Street Bridge at night in the rain, because I'm sure that that's an 1861 statute. So what are, what are those statutes that pertain to us now is the point with that? I'm obviously jesting, but there are statutes on the books that would pertain to us that have no bearing to us in, in present-day law. So I'd like to know what those are, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner, Vice Chairman, Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Manager, I appreciate the information on the sign. I, I would, for the purposes of the people in the audience, I did respond this morning to the email that I received from Mr. Puchard. I am concerned that the exact same thing that happened with the, with the sign posts going up is gonna happen in the middle of the night, and somebody's gonna go in there and put a sign on that. And so I'm glad to see that, to hear that a penalty has been placed, but we need to get them to move, to take that down. It's illegal. It's against our rules, against our regulations, and I don't know what it's gonna take to get that to happen, but, I mean, it is a blight. It's a blight if you're driving on the freeway. It's a blight if you live in that area. It's, it's really ugly, and so I'm glad to hear staff is working on it. And I knew that anyway, because staff has, have been very gracious to meet with me on this issue. So just so that U.S. constituents understand that we really are working on this, and it is a big concern. Trust me, the Mr. Manager has heard from me several times on this issue because I am concerned about it. I'm also curious, and may perhaps Commissioner Jung could answer this when she speaks, but it's my understanding from the Channel Eight program that was talking about the concern with mosquitoes and the testing that's going on, that the Health District is actually working on trying to figure out what they need to spray now and what mosquitoes are out there is. And I think that, that we should answer that question because I do think, I did watch the Channel Eight program, and trust me, there's mosquito larva out there. And so I think the Health District is actually responsible for handling that, and, and so if that's the case, I, I think we need to make sure we publicize that. I will save the rest of my comments for Waste Management, the Waste Management issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. All right. Commissioner Herman.
Cut me off guard.
Sorry about that.
Not a good idea to ride your horse on the bridge, especially at a full gallop.
At night in the rain.
And not at night, especially. Okay? If you like your horse.
That's 1861 law.
Yeah. So I heard a comment about having a place to write your request to speak, and I think it would be a nice idea to maybe put a little table back there and with some pens on it and, and just have a chair or two there, and, and maybe that's possible. Okay. All right. So I've got a good list here, and I'm gonna get through about a third of it today. Several months ago, I asked one of our people, staff members, what the cost would be to put signs up on the shooting range. And so the figure was $4,250, $4,250, which I donated. But now, now it looks like we still haven't got it done, and it's a safety thing. It's, it's, to me, it's very important because I sure hate to see somebody got, get shot for being on the wrong side of the road there on P. Lane. The next one is, for over two years, I've been asking for some word about Monte Cristo, which is out in Warm Springs. The folks that have owned a lot of those lots up there have owned them since the early '70s, and they'd really like to be able to build on them before they die. And so I just really would like to see something, whether, you know, just some news on it, just so we have a timeframe to where they'll know that we're actually working on it. I'm still nagging about cabs. We still need one in Rancho Haven. Lemon Valley has a kind of a position on our North Valleys, but they could probably use their own. They've got separate issues. Verde needs a full-fledged one. I've heard a lot of complaints. So I'm trying to hurry because I got quite a few things here. I'm gonna leave out, I'm only putting about, about a third of them on, on here. Okay. Regarding the marijuana issue, I know that we've asked for staff to come up with some, some way to collect taxes or fees, and I did mention that what Reno charges, and especially since we're getting into the recreational now, and we really need to get something prepared for this, so we're not making excuses about what we're doing. And I had asked several, quite over a year ago, about appointments, the appointments that the board makes, and, and have been part of this process, and, and I feel like there's some issues. It just seems like there's not enough time to learn about the candidates before we appoint them. Maybe in just two years here on the board. I don't know all these people, and they just, they just come on our agenda, and, and we don't really know a lot about them. So that was one thing. And then, no, you know, that, it just seems like they should have a chance to present their case a little better. So that's just, just one of the things that has, I haven't heard anything on. And again, there's no, no solution to Mr. Snow's problem, and, and that's been almost two years. And then I still feel like citizens complain. They're important. And sometimes I feel like people complain about their neighbors kind of needlessly in, in some instances. So I, I just felt like that we should probably take them in writing rather than just over the phone and, and being non-definitioned in any way. And it wouldn't be too bad if they put it in writing, signed it, and got it notarized. So we know that's actually the person that's making the complaint, because sometimes we get into big problems with that, you know? And then we'd asked for a, to move our polling place in Warm Springs back to the fire station since it was brought up to code by the, by the fire department, so, and it was voted on by the cab out there. I think that I have one more thing that's been on the books a long time, and that's RS 2477 Roads. So, but I just would like some answers. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In terms of the mosquito abatement, countywide, not just in Lemon Valley, it is still early in the season for it to be effective. We also are not receiving any extra funding from the General Fund of Washoe County for mosquito abatement this year, something for everybody to think about during the budget cycle. But I've already put in the complaint, and we are able to fog based on hotspot concerns. So the Health District will be out there inspecting and being certain that these indeed are mosquitoes. According to our expert, they don't believe that that could be possible, but let's get them out there and see if that, that's true, and then make sure we identify these hotspots. And probably, so you know, we will need to ask, and it might be go, go with the FEMA flood information and reimbursement, but the, the Health District doesn't have any extra money for anything, and, and that's been a struggle that we've had to, to do with Washoe County, which puts me in a weird situation, right, as the Chair of the Board of Health, and then I'm rallying against Mr. Slaughter for more money for my Board of Health budget. So that is, we are aware of that and already put in the complaint, so I want you to be aware of that. I don't know if I need to ask again for a two-hour rule, and I need staff to do some investigation, but many years ago, I did ask for a contract review committee to be put together, not by the Audit Committee. The Audit Committee are CPAs. I don't think that they would understand the depth, breadth, and importance of being able to look at a contract from a purchasing standpoint, somebody that's already been a vendor understands the, I don't know if you would say it's sneaky ways, but find things that we wouldn't normally find and appoint these to this committee. And I think it really goes to show, as long as, as well as with that NAF Care contract, if we had had another layer of eyes of citizens looking at the change that was proposed by the sheriff, we may not be in the situation that we are in with the, the reported spike in deaths up at the jail. With that being said, I would like to have an agenda item come back to this board as soon as possible to look at how we may help the sheriff. Is it funding? Is it more eyes? And if he even wants our help, right, by the way? But is there something that this board could also be doing and as a body to ensure that we are doing the best that we can with the situation that we find ourselves in with, with our detention facility? Also, I didn't hear anybody ask for this, that's why I go last, is, can we ask Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District Fire Chief Charles Moore to come up at our next meeting and tell us why, where, and if it is sustainable to be doing these burn permits when people ask for those at this time, in this, this, the way that this season is? I mean, if the Department of Forestry couldn't put out a fire, that they did a control burn, I agree with Ms. Peterson that how would you trust a homeowner that doesn't have that area of expertise? So I would like some information on that as well. Are you gonna talk about the electric vehicle? Okay. That's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. I have Commissioner Hartung signed in second time.
Yes, and I'll just piggyback on, I'm glad Commissioner Burke Bigler brought up the issue of the signs. What I'd like to know is from, from staff, what is our ability to actually physically, once something has been deemed unlawful, what's our ability to just take it down? Because I don't think, because it's on private property, I don't think we can just go and remove it. I don't, it's, that, that is our property? That's the county's property? Okay. Okay, so what's our ability? And can we just hire some college kids to go over there and knock them down?
Couple sledgehammers.
Couple sledgehammers and a, and an old truck.
That's how they put it up.
That's how they put it up. We jest, but it, I mean, maybe, maybe there's a way that we can deal with that. I don't know. I know we don't just have the ability to go and remove things. It's, it's not in our purview typically, but it would be nice to know lawfully what we can do. And, and I, too, as Commissioner Jung, I'd certainly like to hear about the detention More than two years ago, I invited Tony Sloanum to come to the detention facility. He and I took a tour, and I've taken multiple tours, and we talked about health care at that time, and having potentially Renown take over that, that facility, because Renown actually has a contract with the state, the state penal system, and so it allows us, it would allow us to manage that care throughout the system, and, and of course, Renown's ability for telemedicine. So those are things that, that I've asked Mr. Sloanum about. That's- That's not directly in our purview, but, but those conversations have been had. So, I, I would love to have more of them in public where we are agendized to talk about them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Mr. Manager, had you signed in?
Mr. Chair, just, just, I guess, under this item is an announcement. We are not certain that that's county-owned property, the cemetery, where the sign is. It's, it's unincorporated within the sphere of influence of the City of Reno. So, a lot of issues related to it, as I mentioned earlier, it's being, staff is, is taking action on, on the, on the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. So, I have a few things that I'd like to bring up. First and foremost, kind of lead off here, Mr. Church often comes and brings suggestions to our board, and I feel this, this suggestion is one that I'm just now hearing about, but this, the icing of electric, electric vehicles, and I think it's timely that we speak about this today, being that this weekend, we celebrated Earth Day, and, you know, we are, from an economic development standpoint, trying to embrace electric vehicles with, you know, the advent of Tesla and the Gigafactory. So, I'd like to ask staff that we look into creating ordinances or policies to prevent, at least in the unincorporated area and on county properties, that there are, there is ramifications, whether that's ticketed vehicles or, or whatnot, for, for non-electric vehicles parking in green charging spots on county property. So, like to look into that and get that on our agenda next as soon as possible. We're going to have some changes. The other thing I'd like to bring about, talk about before I jump into my, I apologize, I'm a little under the weather, so I'm fighting here a little bit. I want to talk, I had some meetings with the Builders Association and a number of contractors and builders in the area that are having challenges with Health Department and, and some, in permitting at the Health Department, and so I'd like to work with staff and Commissioner Jung as the Chair of that board to resolve what some of those issues may be, if there's some, some, you know, and I, Commissioner Hartung brought this up earlier, some disparity in what the ordinance, you know, old ordinances that have been written, is there some clarification that needs to be brought to those ordinances from the, the county side or the health side so that we can move forward? Because, you know, we, there was an article in the Wall Street Journal just last week showing that our housing crunch is going to impact the potential of the tech boom that we may be experiencing here in Washto County, and in the region for that matter. As we know, Google closed on 1,200 acres east of town in the Tri-Tahoe Reno Industrial Center, and we want to make sure that we can continue to facilitate the needs of those residents and continue to allow our area to grow. But to do that, we need to work in symphony together, as a kind of harmonious group, so to speak, to create those, alleviate those challenges. So, I'd like to work on that and get some staff time to do that. I'm asking for a two-hour rule from the board, make sure that happens. And I know the City of Reno, the mayor has called for a housing, a housing workforce to look on that as well. I did go and spend time in Lemon Valley this last weekend, and, and did observe Swan Lake and Silver Lake after our meeting with the tribal lands, the tribal Reno Sparks and Indian Colony. Our luncheon out at Hungry Valley, I decided to take the long road in, which was a poor decision because of its wonderful state. I bounced around from Hungry Valley to Lemon Valley, but made it in nonetheless, and there are some still challenges in Lemon Valley, and I do want to try to see what we can do. I know Mr. Solero and his team have been working on those challenges, but I kind of want to get some more detailed outlines of what are we looking at going forward, and kind of get that long-term plan. We've been talking about bringing that long-term plan, plan back, what that's going to look like, and what we're, how we're going to address those, because as Mr. Cleus had brought up earlier, that those residents have lived out there, and they've seen that, that lake, and, and know its capacity challenges that it has, and that, you know, it may not evaporate by September, and we may be looking at another situation. So, what, what, what is our long-term plan? So, I'd like to bring that back in front of the board as soon as possible. And then, last but not least, I want to discuss kind of today's agenda. We have, I know today we have it, it's outlined for you, and most everybody has seen it, but we're going to move some things around to kind of accommodate there, from the comments made in the public today. We're going to take some things out of order. We're going to go through our consent agenda first, and then we'll move on to a block vote, hopefully, of some items. We intend to speak about trash immediately following our block vote, and then follow that up with a discussion on budget. Based on time currently, and we'll probably take a break at 12:30. I'm gonna take a, we'll take a hard break at 12:30 today and be back at 1:30, and we'll discuss budget, and then Lemon Valley issues, and then final out with our legislative update. So, seeing no, seeing no challenges to that today here from the board, from the board, we will move into that if there is no challenge, no, no problems there. So, Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would it be wise, I mean, we have just as many people for item 14 as we do for item 20. Would it be wise to preempt 14, because that's the short discussion on the cost of permits? Unless that goes into a block vote, but I, I think that we should hold.
Well, we could, well, we could do 14, I'd like to take trash first, and then we'll do 14, we can take 14 immediately following, if that's okay with everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right. So, Mr. Manager, I am going to turn it back over to you at this time for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Your consent agenda appears on the agenda as items 5A through 5H.
And I have some, I have Ms. Kathy Brand, I'm gonna take public comment at this time. I have Ms. Kathy Brandhorse signed in for public comment on the consent agenda.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. I'm be, I'm gonna talk on 5F. A Deputy District Attorney. Well, I just wanted to let you know, the Deputy District Attorney, they do say that they are going to be destroyed, the person who had, that did the murder. And you see what happens is that two days later, or even less than that, they're still walking the streets. So, they have not been destroyed, have they? No, they have not. Drug trafficking areas. Right next door to me, I can smell marijuana so strong, that it is so strong that I feel like I'm gonna faint. Also, task force. Where is our protection here? We don't have no protection here at all, do we? Office of National Drug Control Policy. Where is that? Where are we gonna stop that at? We haven't stopped it at all, because marijuana is still in the city, and they are abusing it. They get so high on it that they murder people so gruesome, I can't believe how they're chopped up with no bones. $80,000. Isn't that another lawsuit against the person who did the murder? Yes, it is. Also, I just wanted to let you know, $20,000 position cost covered by District Attorney General Fund Budget. Yeah, you're taking it and you're stealing it from other people's bank accounts in order to pay for your lawsuits. That's why you're still alive, isn't it? You pay your lawsuits, and then you get to walk the streets. Isn't that the truth? Why don't you tell us? Well, I know it's the truth, because it's also here, the District Attorney, who doesn't have the power anymore. It looks like the person who robs the banks, the bank accounts to pay for the lawsuits have the power, because you carry the machine guns, you carry handguns, you also carry powerful rifles, and you can get away with murder, even bows and arrows. That's the truth, too. Thank you. Because that is what's happening. You can murder us, you can use your machete knife.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorse. All right. Seeing no other public comment on the consent agenda, I would ask the motioner to make the motion on their tablet as well. I have a motion. Anyway, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Okay, hold on. Yes, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, I need a call for the vote.
I did, yes.
All right. Now I have it on here. I'm gonna call for the, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This is the item that we don't get to do it that way, because it's unanimous, so it's a different part of the system that way. I know, we're still learning up here. Bear with us, please. Thank you. All right. Mr. Manager, that, that takes us on out of consent, so I'm gonna call for a block vote now. So, Madam Vice Chair, do you have a block vote for us today?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I would like to put in a block vote, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 16, and 18.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll let Mr. Manager read those.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes. Commissioner Hartung.
I have some questions on item 12. It's not that I want to pull it out of the block, but I do have some questions, so I don't, Mr. Manager or Mr. Liparelli, tell us how we can deal with that.
Well, I think we can leave it in block, correct?
Yes.
And then what we'll do is we'll have the manager read those, and then have staff come up and answer your questions prior to the vote.
Perfect.
Is that okay?
Perfect, yeah. No, I, it's not that I'm voting against it, I just have some questions.
Great. All right. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item six is award invitation to bid numbers 3004-17 for solenoid-operated dead-latch system to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Western Detention, located 3711 East Deer Park, Malon Road, Deer Park, Washington, 99006, in the estimated amount of $236,495. Item seven is recommendation to accept agreement granting the Nevada Department of Transportation access to install new microwave communications and traffic management data equipment into select Washto County-owned and operated radio communication facilities in exchange for Washto County Regional Communications, receiving a share of the creative bandwidth to be used in the ongoing operations and future expansion of the Washto County Regional Communication System Technology Services. Item is possible approval, three separate water rights deeds, transferring a total of 44.5 acre-feet of water rights from Washto County to one, Charles Spitzer, 17.5 acre-feet, Yannette Family Trust, 17.5 acre-feet, and three, Trust Company of American for the benefit of Eric and Constance Roberts, in the amount of 9.5 acre-feet. Item nine is recommendation to one, award bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the 911 Par Lower Detention Roof Tearoff and Replacement Project. Staff recommends D&amp;D roofing and sheet metal in the amount of $454,700, and if awarded, to approve the purchase of roofing materials from Garland DBS in the amount of $326,592.80, utilizing Cobb County, Georgia, bid number 114-5903 pursuant to the joint provision of NRS 332.195, and three, approve a separate $15,000 project contingency fund. Item 10 is recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the Bartley Ranch Maintenance Building Project. Staff recommends Sullivan Structures in the amount of $349,110, and if approved, direct the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget adjustments. Item 11, recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services between Washto County and Arrington Watkins Architects to develop a comprehensive master plan for the Washto County Sheriff's Facility located at 911 Par Boulevard in the amount of $230,370, and direct Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget adjustments. Item 12 is recommendation, recommended amendments to Washto County's Water and Sanitary Sewer Financial Assistance Program policies and procedures to align the execution and recordation of appropriate loan documents prior to authorizing construction to connect to water, to a public water or sanitary sewer system. Item 13 is recommendation to acknowledge receipt of a loan from the Nevada Department of Conservation and Natural Resources through the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection with a term of no more than 20 years from the contract date of December 6, 2016, for the Panther Drive Emergency Sanitary Sewer Project, amount not to exceed $500,000, with 100% of the principal forgiven, and to direct the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget adjustments. Item 16 is recommendation to approve a cooperative agreement between Washto County and the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe for the revision of fire and emergency medical services to the privately held areas of Sutcliffe, to include provision of fleet maintenance to the tribe's public safety fleet, and authorize the Chair to sign the agreement and direct the Finance Department to make the necessary adjustment, changes to the Equipment Services Division budget. And item 18 is status and possible direction on progress related to the exclusive negotiation with the Greater Reno Community Ice Skating Association regarding Reno ICE, to utilize Washto County property located within the South Valleys Regional Park as the location for the project.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. At this time, I'm going to hit the 18. Do I have anyone signed in for public comment?
I didn't see anyone signed in on any of the consent items, Mr. Chair.
I mean, on any of the blocking.
The block items, I'm sorry. Correct.
Okay. Seeing no speakers on public comment, we're going to go back to item 12, correct, Mr. Commissioner Hartung?
And it's connected to item 13.
Okay. So, if we could get staff.
Yes, Ben Hutchins, Division Director for Finance and Admin for Community Services Department. I can address any questions that you may have, Commissioner Hartung, on item number 12.
Just a quick question. Are item 12 and 13, are they connected?
No.
Okay, so, the, the change for the water is, doesn't have anything to do with the loan?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Okay, so, that, that takes care of that question, then probably Mr. Solero on item 13, and I had it listed, but I just didn't, didn't ask.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins.
For the record, Dave Solero, Director, Community Services Department.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Solero. I appreciate you coming down and answering a couple of questions. So, this has to do with sanitary sewer in Panther Valley, and I recognize that there were some failures there. We, we have, I get calls periodically of people's septic systems failing, continuing to fail because of the age in Spanish Springs. Do we have any intent to continue to try to move that forward?
So, specific to Spanish Springs, we are working with the state on the continued process for the septic conversion.
That's correct.
You know, the, the issue there is, you know, kind of the impact of the groundwater, and we're working with TMA and, and working through those things. This specific item for Panther Valley is a little bit different in that we have a little island that the Health District has noticed multiple failures of septic systems.
Okay.
We have sewer right, right down the street, working with the state, working with the Health District. We came up with a, with a way to fund this, so that the, pretty much all of the costs are funded through a state program.
Okay.
With a zero-interest loan. This happens to be coming back to you, because we missed a step in the original item brought to the board, and that was directing the Comptroller to actually accept the money from the state and allow us to then, to put it back out. So, yes, we are continuing the process out in Spanish Springs with the state, but this is a different process project for Panther.
People notice that these changes are being made around the county to modernize the systems, and, you know, certainly Spanish Springs is, it's one of those issues that's been dogging us for many years, my house being over 30 years old on a septic system. My neighbors, this is not just about me, my septic system works fine, but it would be nice if we could put together some type of a process, the same as this, for Spanish Springs, and that is the extent of my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Solero.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. All right. I have our Deputy DA, Liparelli, signed in to speak on item 18.
Mr. Chairman, on item 18, the Reno ICE item, the, the agenda item calls for direction to staff, and in your staff report, there's a possible motion to direct staff with the assistance of the DA's office to complete- assistance of the DA's office to complete stage two of the unsolicited proposal policy by completing all necessary documents, including leases and term sheet for the proposed ice skating facilities' construction and operation, for final review and approval by the board. Is that the board's direction to staff on that item?
Yes, that's the direction that I would give in my motion, in my block motion.
Commissioner John, do you agree with that, the seconder? Okay. So, we have a motion. Commissioner Berkblyler, Madam Vice Chair, would you place your motion on your tablet, please?
I will. Mr. Chairman, I already input it on the block.
Thank you.
I have to do it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. So, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye and submit your vote.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Let's make sure, please affirm your vote. All right. Seeing no changes, we'll accept that as our vote today for the block. Thank you very much for that. All right, moving on. We are moving on now to item 20, which is...Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chair, item 20 is an update and direction to staff on Waste Management franchise agreement and possible related matters. And I believe Assistant County Manager Kevin Schiller will be here to begin the discussion, and then representatives from Waste Management are here as well.
Good morning, Mr. Schiller.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the Commission. This is a follow-up to my last presentation, which was earlier this year, and then in follow-up to the board approval of the franchise agreement on November 29. Two specific things I wanted to cover just at the intro. The staff report is essentially an outline by area of where I wanted to ensure we could have kind of a free-form discussion tied to each of those areas, trying to create some level of a framework in terms of what recommendations we can move forward. So, at the onset, what I would indicate on the prior approval of the agreement, which has not been executed to date, my intent today is to receive direction from you as a board tied to those specific areas and tied to any changes that you want to see ratified into the contractual agreement. So, as we walk through this, I think one of the key components of understanding is we likely will have to come back to you without choice in terms of those options and what the costing is based on the direction. So, rate structure and areas tied to that will have to be calculated based on the direction you give me today, so we won't take action from the perspective of giving you a rate today. We would move forward in terms of continuing to review and then come back to you. I wanted to ensure also on the contractual arrangement and where we currently sit, again, the prior agreement that was approved on November 29 has not been executed to date, but that was approved by the board, and that did initiate the implementation that began in December. As we walk through this, we will talk about what was previously occurring in the previous franchise agreement and what currently exists in the new franchise agreement. And I want...and my intent is, is as we walk through each of those things, to get direction by category. So, as we go through each area, if there's an area that I haven't covered, I want to make sure you guys can speak to that, but I wanted to at least create some level of a framework and ask if that was okay for you moving forward, Chairman. So, first issue that I think...I think you've heard lots of public comment on it, we've received hundreds of calls in the manager's office from the implementation date, which started in December. One of the key areas that has been outlined has been the ongoing communication difficulties in the customer service. So, in the customer service area, first speaking to single stream in the new agreement, as you've already heard before this board before, packets went out with the single stream implementation. About the same time that occurred, you had the storm issue, and then we had basically miscommunication tied to both people receiving packets and both people understanding the program. So, that was one piece of this, and then the second piece tied to the customer service, which I think we can talk about throughout this presentation, is going to be what are the remedies tied to that customer service between the Phoenix location and the Reno location? That's been a significant component. Our constituent services staff have spent a great deal of time working with Waste Management staff tied to how to be more responsive, how to tighten those timeframes. When you look at what your options are, we had ombudsman language in the current unexecuted agreement. One of the recommendations that we've talked about is trying to figure out how we can tighten up timeframes tied to that in terms of disputes, and I'll just give examples. If I get a call that comes in through our customer service at the manager's office tied to not receiving stickers, the way we have essentially built in our process is having a direct contact with Waste Management to request those stickers and get them to those said residents. That's a minimal one. Other ones continue around route structure, route times, those types of things, and then to make it more complex, tying it over to storms and when there's lack of service. So, a discussion there has also been service credits tied to lack of service, so if they haven't received service, and then also trying to figure out what those essential timeframes are, working with not only in suburban Reno, but also working with our community services staff tied to plowing and tied to other areas. So, that first category, I thought I'd start off with, just in terms of the customer service component tied to the ombudsman language to say to you, you know, it's an open dialogue in terms of what are our options. Waste Management has centralized their customer service in that Phoenix location, but I think one of the primary focuses when this was presented before the board was really critical to responsiveness and having some local level of service, so I wanted to open that up first in terms of that. My recommendation, obviously, is on the timeframes and the responsiveness for us to continue to work forward with that with Waste Management, but in terms of language, what I would need to do is get some direction specific to language that you would want to see proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Berkblyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the aspects of this communication issue that I think has been a problem for some of the constituents who live in the county versus live in the city is when they call, they get a response that relates to one of the city's franchises rather than the county's franchises, and that's really been confusing for people out in areas where they have very large lots, and they're not always getting the same answer, and I think that's confusing. If they're lucky enough to get somebody who understands that there are really three franchises here and that they have some differences, then they get one answer. If they're not lucky enough to get that, then they get an answer, well, that's the way the Reno franchise is, and that's, you know, it's left to that. And so, I think that's one aspect that really, we really need to try to figure out how we make certain that people who live in the county and have larger spaces of land, have trees that, you know, require leaf collection, require needle collection, they...those people need to be taken...to be given a different type of communication system, or at least they need to talk to somebody who understands that there's a difference.
Through the chairman, back to Commissioner Berkblyler, I think two things I would highlight with that, and we'll get into it later, I think, as we go through other areas. One is what are the options tied to...one of the challenges, I think, in unincorporated Washoe County is we really have three different service types, for lack of a better term. You have suburban, and then you get into kind of semi-rural, and then you actually get into rural, in my view, which will come in throughout these topic areas. I think we've already identified the issue in terms of communication based on what are those service types. So, coming out of the backside, whenever we have things facilitated on how we want them to look, we can use that as a vehicle to say, okay, how are we going to communicate that? And I think at the last meeting, I talked about, there was an, you know, they had kind of an auto-dial system that kind of went to residences, but the problem is, many people don't even have a regular phone in their home anymore. So, trying to figure out how do we become more active from a social media perspective, how we're noticing in terms of how we're changing in terms of how we do outreach. I think it has to be a collaborative effort. I do concur with you, there's lots of questions that come forward related to the three different jurisdictions, so that does create confusion, including inclines. So, I would actually throw them in as a fourth. I think the other piece that I've heard from customers, loud and clear in terms of the differences in terms of what service they have or not, is that even in certain areas, for example, if you go into certain areas, when I'm working with Collin Ranch as an example, and you have Reno and you have unincorporated Washoe County, the bear issue was identified just recently in terms of how do we manage that in the same area when you have two different franchises? So, we're trying to work through that, but I hear you.
So, before we get into some of the Commissioner's concerns, I'd like to open it up to public comment at this time and try to...and really, truly hear from the constituent base and address those issues. Is that okay with you, Manager Schiller?
You're the boss. What I would say is, one thing I would like to highlight, just as you listen to the public comment, because I think it would be important, back to the statement on the needs in the different areas, in terms of what we recommend coming out of this outside of the customer service, what I really want to make sure we're able to do as we capture the public comment, and we've captured a lot of it and kind of tried to categorize it, is make sure we talk about those different areas in terms of the county, in terms of what's plausible in terms of the rate structure, and in terms of the business side, so I think that's fine.
All right, thank you, Mr. Schiller. You know, before I open up public comment here, I really want to address one thing, is that I do want to...I want to make sure what we're doing here today is trying to be as constructive as possible and really try to address what we'd like to see going forward as a community, and really address the issues that we are seeing as a community with the current arrangement. So, with that being said, I'm open to public comment, and I would ask Mr. Robert Parker if you will have you come down and speak first, and then Mr. Majora, you'll be...you'll follow Mr. Parker after that. Good morning, Mr. Parker.
Good morning, Bob. Nice to see you all. I'm Bob Parker. I live in Gleana Forest in a subdivision that the county approved in the 1980s. Our area has very similar vegetation to Incline Village, and we're at the same altitude. Because our area was not logged over during the Comstock era, we have large, old, historic pines throughout the neighborhood. My property is an acre and a quarter, and I have 70 such pines. I had 71 until one of them tried to fall on my house the other day. These tree drop cones, branches, needles throughout the year. When the wind blows, I get two bags of pine cones. We took advantage of the provision that we could dispose of six bags of yard waste a week during the growing season to keep our defensible space clear. This was part of our disposal service for which we paid. Now, the county and Waste Management have decided to make the removal of yard waste much more difficult and more expensive. We've taken away the six bags of yard waste for two-thirds of the pick-up days during the growing season. If we want to put the bags out, we have to buy stickers during the growing season, that's $270. It triples the cost of trash removal for a homeowner with only a single 96-gallon bin. Triples! People are asking what they're supposed to do with the yard waste. The weeds and grass are going to dry out, not tomorrow, but they're going to dry out. We've already had two fires where homeowners are burning yard waste. One of them got out of control. All this debris is a severe fire hazard, to which the county and Waste Management are partly responsible. You need to get this under control before you have a catastrophe like the Washoe Valley Fire. Allow me to suggest the arrangement that Incline Village negotiates with Waste Management. The homeowners still have used these damn stickers with "Blow off the bags," oh, by the way, and they require their drivers to stop and peel them off. Unbelievable! But they're given enough numbers of stickers that they only have five pickup days that are uncovered. Most people don't put these bags out every week. This would solve the problem in places like Gleana as it solves it in Incline. People who have these larger properties will get what they need, and, oh, by the way, Incline's fee, Waste Management fee, is 2% higher than what we're being asked to pay now. 63 cents a month, and you don't have to pay the $270, which we're going to have to pay. That's the solution here. They negotiated a deal with Incline. I have trouble believing the county didn't know that was there, and we have people going, well, how can they get it? We don't get it. We got the same hillsides, the same environment, the same fire danger. It's a large fire danger. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Bill Majora, followed by Ms. Teresa Lansaw. Lansaw.
I'm Bill Majora from the east edge of Virginia foothills in Virginia Highlands. Waste Management really doesn't need charity. Yesterday, Waste Management stock closed 140% higher than it closed on 15 November 2012. That's more than doubled. Their earnings are a bit over 50% above their 2.31% dividend, and this franchise agreement gives Waste Management, at least on my garbage bill, over a 5% increase in rates and allows them to reduce their service by 84% for weight of excess garbage bags. Because I used to get seven bags a week included in my garbage bill. For me, Waste Management did enforce the seven-bag weekly limit on excess waste pickup. When I put out more than seven bags in 2011 and again in 2016, they weren't picked up, only the seven bags, but the excess was not. Even when I had a pickup failure and I put out extra bags in accordance with what the customer service rep told me, they only picked up the seven bags. I couldn't get rid of the excess until I went to the county manager's office. Many of my neighbors in Virginia foothills have half to three-quarter acre lots and generate a lot of excess waste, a lot more than 25 bags a year that the stickers cover, and even the extra 54 bags a year you can put out without stickers in May and November. Many of...and my best estimate is that I have put out somewhere between 80 and maybe 150 bags every year on average from since 2011, when I found out about the extra bags. Nine years before that, I didn't know about them, and I found other ways to get rid of my waste, much more expensive. All the Waste Management stickers for bags of excess waste are paid for by the customers, all of them, whether they're used or not. I don't see why Waste Management should be putting expiration dates on them. I don't see why they should be different for customers in different franchise areas, because a bag of waste that weighs 50 pounds is a bag of waste that weighs 50 pounds. And I have lots of friends in my franchise pickup area and other areas, including the city of Reno and other parts of Washoe County, that will give me their excess stickers if I could just use them. If you can do something about that and just require them to accept stickers for any sticker they've issued from anybody who has the excess waste, it might help some.
Thank you, Mr. Majora.
Mr. Majora, can I please have what you put on the overhead?
Ms. Lansaw?
Thank you.
And then followed by Ms. Nicole Harris.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Teresa Lansaw, and I live in Golden Valley, in the North Valleys, and I have a similar problem to what some of the people in Gleana are talking about, except I'm not fortunate enough to have beautiful pine trees. I have stuff that dropped sleeves and limbs all year long. I have an additional problem of...that I'm single with health problems, so I can no longer, I could not do before, drag the big trash barrels around the lot and get it to the curb. So, I went out and bought the smaller Rubber Maids with wheels so I could get them to the curb, and I really miss that convenience. I cannot load up bags and get them to the curb. I don't have a truck to take advantage of the two truckloads I could do a year, so I'm stuck with what to do with my extra garbage. I've been loading up the trash can every single week, and the stuff right now I keep for the next week if I can get it in. I don't know what to do. I need help. I would be really appreciative if I could still use the rolling tubs and not have to go out and buy additional bags and put the stickers on that, but I still will run out of stickers very shortly. I don't know what some of the solutions is. I would really wish we could go back to six containers being out there, because it is not only easier for me, but the guy doesn't have to pick them up. He just uses the claw and dumps them in, which saves the back of our poor trash guy. I have excellent service in the past, but since this has been instituted, I've been at a loss. Cost-wise, I see my bill went up in February, and it's going up again May 1, so I'm paying more for a whole bunch less service. I don't know how I'm going to maintain my full acre yard. I don't know where to put the trash, and I think this will institute a lot more dumping in the hills, which is right behind my house. Thank you for your consideration, and if you could please institute the rolling containers that would still be okay and without additional charge, I would most appreciate it, and so would my neighbors, especially ones with the horse- would my neighbors, especially ones with the horse species that lay there. Thank you very much. I appreciate your concern.
Thank you, Ms. Lansah. Next, Ms. Nicole Harris. Followed by Ms. Harris will be Ms. Donna Peterson.
There are several things you can do. I think number one is, there needs to be some sort of communication with the facts and information that has been presented here today. I, for once, for one, learned a lot today. Did not realize there are so many different franchise agreements. I don't even know if I live in the incorporated county. I still don't know if I can get my six extra bags in May and November. There's mass confusion out there. Plus, we have a lot of individuals who are very, very upset with the county and with Waste Management. So, I would really advise to do some sort of memo to send out to the residents in these areas, to get the correct information out. Even with the printed material that Waste Management sends out, which I haven't received yet, the sticker package, there's different information going on the next-door site, and that's not helpful, because that creates more confusion. Second thing is, less is more. I think that the system that we had before worked. Maybe you need to go back and look at that, and say, "Okay, what are the costs that Waste Management wants to institute if we want to have that system?" The other thing is that we have many elderly folks now that really cannot pick up the pine cones. I do not do yard work. However, my next-door neighbor hired someone to do it, and it cost him $1,000 to clear the pine cones and the needles 25 feet from their house. I do not intend to spend $1,000. However, I'm out there every morning to do my 15 minutes of exercise to get the garbage cans filled out. Am I concerned about Waste Management, how they will sort out the garbage? No. So, the other thing is, burn permits. We are having a meeting with the Commissioner, not the Commissioner, the Chief Moore with the Fire District. I would encourage the county to get involved with that meeting, to have representatives there, so that the people that go to this meeting understand how concerned you are, and we are all working together. So, thank you very much for this, and for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Ms. Donna Peterson.
I'm pretty much going to trash, no, pun intended, well, sort of, what I had written here, because it's pretty much what you keep hearing. I guess the one thing I haven't heard anybody address is, Waste Management is telling us these two months, May and November, you can put out six bags per week. That's a problem in addition to all of the others, because you're basically saying, if you put out your six bags per week in April, you've got to use your stickers. Well, I've got to tell you, in St. James and Galena, people are clearing their properties, and they have been since as soon as the snow was gone. So, you know, telling us what months we have to use is as unhelpful as the rest of it. But I'm going to just sort of skip to, where can we go from here? I'm concerned when I've been told that the county's been soliciting input since January, and we're still kind of not at, "Here's an idea, let's do this." The contract isn't signed. So, why can't we just say, until we make progress, "Let's actually do something," and tell Waste Management, until there's something new in place, let people put out their six bags per week, encourage them to clear their properties, let's keep things moving forward so we don't have the liability and fears of being, saying after there's another fire, "Oops, why didn't we do this?" And secondly, stop issuing burn permits until you can evaluate the situation. Don't take another month or two to decide, "Okay, this area should have burn permits, this one shouldn't." There's really no justifiable reason why Galena Forest and some of the other areas, without strong agricultural needs, should be issuing burn permits, other than they're worried about how to get rid of their yard waste. So, let's just kind of take a positive, constructive action. Do something now, and if you need additional time and evaluation, do that, but get your customers and your constituents safe and satisfied in the short term, while we continue to talk, if that's actually necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Next up, I have Mr. Ken Lutz. Followed by Mr. Lutz would be Ms. Nikki Berry.
You know, if you go through up there, which we have, and some of my neighbors are here, what we do with the Fire Department on how to get out of there in case of a fire, because there's not a lot of ways to get out, what has to happen, they come in, take a look at your property, take a look at what needs to be done. All right? And if you take a look at what we've had to do with that, the problem is, if we can't get this, the needles out of there, because here's, if you drive through the neighborhood today, see, as an example, I've got a thing from the Fire Department, how far the logs for our fireplace have to be from the house, and that they have to be covered with a fireproof blanket. If you drive through there today, you'll see houses with bags and bags and bags of needles, which are much more combustible. You know, one of my, one of the neighbors down the street's probably got 20, 30 bags stacked on the side of his house. We're going to have, we're just an accident waiting to happen up there. And we, and the problem is with just having days, if it sounds like I'm upset, I am, just having certain months that we can do this, that's all well and good, but this is a process we do all year. And the cost to do it, I've got a guy up there today. On top of the 270, you've got, if you're going to hire somebody, you're going to hire somebody to clean it, and then also hire somebody to get it out of there. So, I think that what, I think the one thing we need to look at here more than anything else, is there's a serious fire problem there. It came very close to us the last time, to the point that we had to pack up and get out. And if the needles aren't out of there, because some of the neighbors go, "Well, fine, then we won't pick them up," that's going to be a bigger problem.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Next, I have Ms. Nikki Berry. Good morning, Ms. Berry.
Hello, Commissioner Chair, members of the County Commission, County Manager, and District Attorney's Office. My name is Nikki Berry. I live in the Lemon Valley area. I do have concerns about Waste Management. The rural parts of Nevada have different needs than our in-town needs. All needs must be considered in order for our property to be maintained free of weeds and debris throughout the year. As we know, Lemon Valley has had additional waste due to flooding, the inability to pick up waste and garbage during the winter months, and when it was picked up, containers were thrown in the ditches filled with dirty water. The sticker model will not work in the rural areas sufficiently. We have discussed possible credits to be given to the residents when we were not provided service. Deductions for service are not reflected in our bills. I ask that the needs of all be considered, so that we can adequately maintain our property and ensure our homes remain clean, safe, and beautiful. While it is fair for us to pay for service, however, paying for more, paying more for less service is disheartening as a homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. Next, I have Mr. Rick Lake.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Rick Lake, and I'm with Osessi Waste, Nevada's new trash man. We currently pick up residential trash for customers in Fallon. We have about 1,500 customers. We focus on customer service, providing the highest quality of service for the cost, and I thought we would come here and throw our hat in the ring, and say that since the city of Fallon has chosen to not take care of the trash for the residents in the unincorporated area, maybe we can do that here in Washoe County. I believe we can get some smaller trucks out in these rural areas, and get on these dirt roads, and supply service. We're definitely going to have to look at costs, because when you do have to help somebody get a can from their property up to the road, that's a little bit more time-consuming and things of that nature. But these are all things that we would look at as a company, to provide this service for Washoe County. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Next, I have Ms. Tammy Holtzstill. Sorry, Ms. Holtzstill, I forgot to queue you.
Hello. I had a couple of issues regarding this. First of all, after listening to the comments, I am very concerned about the fact that the contract has not been signed, yet the rollout was done, and increases were done to us residents without the contract being signed. I think that also, that there should be competition, so that there's competition, and with the competition comes better service and better rates. I think that there's a monopoly happening with Waste Management, and I think it needs to stop. I think there's other ways to handle this without doing what's being done. I understand that some of the Commissioners like the single-streaming, which is great, but single-streaming alone is not a reason to change a contract that is already out there and is already in place, until you find the right fit. Everything is different than in the city, and if I remember right, I understand that the city of Reno even has a lawsuit going against Waste Management. So, there's issues out there, and you guys need to think twice before doing something that is more damaging to your constituents. Prices are up, costs are up everywhere, why do we need to be paying more for less service? Those are things you need to look about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tammy Holtzstill. All right, seeing no further speakers, it's time for the public comment. I'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Schiller. I think with this, obviously, we've heard a number of concerns from, and I'm going to kick this, I'm going to kick it off for the Commissioners, and have, kind of share some of the concerns that I've seen. One issue, really quick, actually, before we leave public comment, as I want to read, there was, Ms. Claudia Watkins emailed me and was unable to attend this morning, and asked me to read her statement into the record for her. However, my computer is locked up now, and I can't get to her email, so I'll read that into the record, or provide that to staff, to get that into the record. The challenges that I've had, though, is that I have issues with the agreement, as currently, so to speak, manufactured. As we heard, you know, the IFGID agreement, you know, they have a number of different challenges with the sticker. They have quite a bit more in regards to stickers, specifically for their area, to deal with fuels management, and, you know, some of the biological waste, you know, pine needles, that kind of issue. And so, they have an area-specific service, and we weren't offered that area-specific service, or that wasn't ever really brought to the table. They have, from my understanding, they get 96 stickers in Incline Village for that waste, and we currently get 25 stickers. But, stickers aside, I have some issues with the sticker program at all. I think we've heard stickers are just a challenge for any homeowner. One, putting them on the bags, they blow off with the wind, you know, they're, you know, they can get blown, so they get blown off, the driver doesn't see them, whatever may happen, they don't get picked up. I have an email here from a constituent, Mr. Kevin Britt, and up in Galena, where there's close to, about, looks to me, like, at least 20 to 25 bags piled up, and probably no shorter than six feet tall, off of Joy Lake Road, just isn't being moved, not being addressed, whether there were stickers on it or not, or if they put them out for the May cleanup, nothing's being addressed there. And so, I think there's this big departure from where Waste Management's feeling of what we need to really do in regards to addressing customer service and how we deal with that, because it seems like what we were, we were at, where Waste Management was willing to go the extra mile and make sure we had a clean county, all changed come January, where it's now we're under the strict realization of these new, this new agreement, and we're going to do single-stream, and we're going to adhere to, you know, no more bags, and these challenges. And to me, we've heard, one, the communication has been, if not poor, nil, basically, and I don't know if we've done a good job of doing that through the county, in conjunction with Waste Management, or Waste Management, you know, with their mailer was sufficient enough. I know that Incline Village has, on the IFGID website, up in Incline Village, they have a specific page on their, on their county website, that talks about waste removal, and the options that are out there. I have concerns with the fire and the vegetation, and this is not just specifically Galena. And my district represents West Washoe Valley, where there's a number of pine trees. It represents Hidden Valley, different things like that. We hear the same concerns in Lemon Valley, in the Northern Valleys. This is not just a, you know, District Two or Galena Forest issue. Excess vegetation in our county is a tremendous issue, and I'd like to see some sort of answer to that. I've been asking for an answer to that from Waste Management, and we still have yet to come up with some sort of. And then, the other thing I'd like to figure out, is really the delta, the delta in the cost of the trash service. Why, what was, I mean, we, it looks like we've significantly, the cost changes, so, you know, hopefully, Mr. Martinelli and Waste Management can address that for us today. But why? Because, to my opinion, in my opinion, we've increased the cost of service, decreased the actual, decreased the actual service, and decreased the drivers on the truck, employments. So, you have less employees, bigger trucks to maintain with an automated service, but now you've increased the cost, and you're not actually servicing as much as you used to. So, those are issues that I'd like to be brought out and put on the record today as well. So, those are my concerns, and so...
So, for the record, Kevin Schiller, would it be best, would we like to take those first, and then walk through those with Mr. Martinelli, and then move on to the next round?
Yeah, let's get some, let's kind of, let's get a collaborative from all the Commissioners right here, and then we can go through them one item by one item. Is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, Mr. Krishna Hartung, let's see here, I've got, actually, Vice Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Burke Piller, I have you sign in first.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, thank you very much. So, on the proposed option, I have the exact same concerns, so I'll start with that. I have the exact same concerns that the Chair has, and that is that we seem to have gone from really what wasn't bad trash service in the county, to January 1, all of a sudden we have higher rates and less service. And so, that has really been a concern for all the constituents, my constituents. And, you know, I went through this earlier on with Incline Village, because the franchise, their franchise was being negotiated, what, two years ago, I think? And they're very happy up there now with their circumstance, largely because they have the ability to put out extra bags, they have the ability to have extra stickers, if you will. Yes, that's a problem for some seniors who don't have the physical strength to pull the bags out, but fortunately, they've got neighbors who are working with them, and the issue of pine needles is a serious problem up there. Obviously, that's aside from the issue we're dealing with today, but if we could resolve that issue in Incline Village, we should be able to resolve that issue in the valley also, because we have the same tree problem in the valley that we do up there. I think the most important thing that has concerned me about this is, there's a vast difference between the urban city of Reno and where I live. I have absolutely no problems. I do the single-stream recycling, I have two great big baskets, or whatever you call the trolley things, and they're both full today, because I've been doing yard work, so the trash one got full of yard work, and the other one is always full with recycling. But, but I think, you know, so it's not an issue for me, because I live in town and I have a third of an acre. But right up the street on Mayberry, there are people who have, you know, acres, five acres, 10 acres. They really have a serious problem, in that they cannot get the recycling that they have for just one single week into that recycling can, and then they don't, they can't put their six bags, or whatever it was they were putting out before. So, I think there's a vast difference between the urban community and the rural community, and somehow, we have to address that issue in this whole process. But one of the other things that I am curious about on... about on this very first issue of communications, which I have already spoken about being a concern, is the proposed option is to increase the responsiveness of the customer service ombudsman to include shorter timeframes to address outstanding issues in conjunction with the Reno Waste Management Office. How are we as the county going to police that? Who's going to take the calls from the constituents at the county when the, when in fact, that's not what's going on at Waste Management? And, I mean, that's the problem we've got. Now, we're into, quickly moving into May here, so for four months, we've been doing this, and for four months, the county has been receiving complaints to our hotline. How are we going to assure that it happens? And that's, that's something that I think needs to be in the, in the franchise. What's the penalty to Waste Management if they don't do what they say they, in our franchise, that they're going to do? Having been a cable person, I assure you, as when I negotiated a franchise with the local government, if I didn't do what I agreed to in that franchise, I got a penalty for it. And so, I mean, what's the penalty to Waste Management if they don't do what they're supposed to do? One of the arguments we heard repeatedly, because we had so much snow in Galena Forest, and of course, I heard it in Incline Village, but in Galena Forest, one of the arguments we heard constantly was, oh, well, there was too much snow, we couldn't get our truck up there. We get our fire trucks up there, we get our ambulances up there. Our road crews do a very good job of cleaning those roads to make sure the ambulances and the fire trucks can get into these people, but the Waste Management truck can't get in there. There's no excuse for that kind of an argument. What's the penalty? What's, how are we going to, how are we going to police this whole thing? And I think that's really one of the biggest questions that I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Herman.
I think that, right, okay. We've been talking about, talking trash for a long time, but now we, we've got to do something. So for a long time now, I've been saying that the rurals are different, and they are, and we have different kinds of rurals. We have the ones with the trees, and then we have the horse, horses and their product, byproduct on the other end. And so there's ways to dispose of some of those things and make them useful. And there are some services that do that. Talking to all the folks in my district, for instance, I was at the Golden Valley Property Owners Association, and they're all for just being taken right out of the garbage service and, and doing something on their own. Palomino Valley, those folks never wanted to have Waste Management come out and suffer with all the roads in the winter time and all that sort of thing. And so they, they would be happy to be out of the contract. Lemon Valley people, I've talked to them, North Valleys Cab, all these different places in my district, and they would, they would really like to be pretty much out of that system and be able to choose on their own, negotiate their own kind of deals. So that, that's one end of it. The stickers and the bags out in the rurals, they're, they're just not real practical. You've got coyotes getting into garbage, you got like, you got the bear things up in the mountains, but we don't have anything for there. For the, our bags get torn open and gets, garbage gets spread all over the countryside. So there's, there's things that I think, you know, if we could change the franchise contract to eliminate the rurals, even in District Five, you have big fingers of, of city of Reno. So they're taken care of with the single stream. That works fine for them, and they're happy. They have small lots like we've discussed here. And, and some other districts in the county are, are, you know, more cityfied and, and they have a different, different needs. So maybe with some flexibility, we can work something out like that and give everybody a chance to, to get, get something done. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to sort of dovetail on the other comments, but this is, this is a difficult conversation, because we, we have some distinct differences in terms of clientele. So in Spanish Springs, at the south end of the valley, I have relatively small parcels. The north end of the valley, I have large parcels. So the, the costs are essentially the same, and while I'm sensitive to the folks who have large parcels, I'm one of them, I have an acre and a third, I have lots and lots of stuff on my property, believe me, more than I know what to do with at times. But the, the difficult part is, is how do we balance from someone who owns a small parcel versus someone who owns a large parcel? One of my disappointments, Mr. Schiller, was that there was not a cost analysis in here, contents of, of costs. And I, I know that recycling bins, and this is something we talked about sadly after, you know, because Commissioner Lucy and I met with Waste Management, and sadly, the chairman had to leave for another appointment, but, but we talked about the differential in, in the cost of a recycling container versus a, a regular trash container. And so that, I was, I was hoping to see a rate schedule in here, but I did not. And I, we were given one during the appointment, but, but I left it on my desk upstairs, and so it's okay, it's no big deal. But it's, it's one of the, one of the things that I think we need to talk about with respect to the cost differential in, in that, in that container. And then how do we deal with the disparity between large property owners and small property owners? And, and again, while I'm sensitive to those people who have pine needles on their property, I don't have pine needles on my property. And so when you, when you purchase a property, you, you know, you have, there are distinct issues that go with that property in terms of cleanup and et cetera. I intentionally have left nearly an acre in my sort of back 40 that is sage. It's wild. It's not, I, in fact, if I put a shovel in it, it grows. And that's, and that's a problem, and I kid you not about that. If you put a shovel in it, it grows. If you leave it alone, it's great, it manages itself, it's really amazing. So, some people have said, why haven't you cleared it? And my response is, why would I want to do that? Because then I just have to care for it, weed it every single year. So I don't know how we deal with this. I don't know how we come up with this balancing solution whereby you have somebody who has a 10-acre parcel, me who has an acre and a third, guy down at the south end of the valley who has, you know, well, their average third-acre parcels, but his, the, the size of his parcel is probably more like eight or 9,000 square feet because of the, the averaging that went on with the roads and the open space and the common areas. So you've got, you know, these very small parcels to these very large parcels, and then you've got Commissioner Herman's district where people have 40s, 80s, 160s, 640s maybe. You know, how do you, how do we deal with that? So I, I'm, I'm not offering any solutions here. I'm, I'm just saying that there's a, there's a, a difference in the clientele, and that needs to be recognized. That's part of the solution, is recognizing the difference in the clientele. Mr. Schiller, you'd like to chime in.
Through the chair to you. I would just say, per our prior discussions and even today in the presentation, our intent is to talk about exactly that issue. I will put on record that I think that the primary issue going into this, and I, I'm going to quantify it unique to Washoe County, just for my purposes, is the fact that an acre and a half versus a third acre, or 20 acres versus an acre, there is a cost differential. So I think as we discuss the delta later, I think that's important to note. I think that's one of the primary areas. If I take all the collective areas that we've talked about, you know, how do people get rid of excess yard waste? How do people get rid of manure? What's the service cost tied to that? So in the staff report, we'll talk about in a little bit, we talked about kind of a residential plus rate in concept. But I think in terms of the discussion, as we move forward on the rate side of it, one of the key areas, too, is also to incorporate into where other communities have other programs that are not paid for, that participate in pickup of trash, which is more community-driven and nonprofit-driven than in, say, an incorporated Washoe County. So that franchise fee discussion that we've had historically, in terms of how we collected some level of a subsidy to try to support some of those initiatives, was kind of an attempt at doing that. But I guess I wanted to make sure I put on record, I completely agree, the issue, the challenge is what's the rate structure look like between three different sets of parcels, as an example?
Well, and, and, you know, as you know, we discussed this, Mr. Schiller, because you were in this, in this meeting, the difference in the cost of a container from recycling to, to waste. And, and, you know, you mentioned manure. That's a huge issue in our neighborhood, at least on the east side of the highway. We have a lot of people who own horses. On the west side of the highway, I have nobody that owns a horse, well, not legally, on their, kept on their property, let's put it that way. I, I've been told recently that there is a guy over there, I've not seen it myself, but I've received no physical complaints. But, but if you've got a third of an acre, you can't have
Right.
a horse. It's, it's not legal in the county. So, so there's, there's some, there's some real distinct differences here that, that I think we just, we need to look at and, and property size matters. It is that, that ownership. When my wife and I bought our property more than 30 years ago now, we knew that there was some challenges that, that people on smaller lots didn't have, with just with maintaining that property. And, and there's been a suggestion that we remove burn permits. Burn permits are commonly used out in our neighborhood, and they're, and they're used wisely. I, knock on wood, we haven't had any escape yet, but that's something that, that if we were to take burn permits away in, in the Spanish Springs area, that would be a, be a real problem for people. And it would be a problem for many people who have agricultural properties down in the, in the valley areas and, and Washoe Valley and some other places. So I, this is not an easy one to solve. And, and the, the changes, is a, is a toter, this is just one fast question, is a toter six bags? Is that, is that, does that constitute six bags? A 96-gallon toter? Mr. Martinelli.
Greg, Greg Martinelli of Waste Management. No, that'd be half a yard.
96 bags?
96 would be three 32-gallon bags.
96 is, okay, I got that.
It's 96 gallons.
Oh, yeah, I understand, but what's a, what's a, what's a bag constitute? What is that, you know, because of, you know, a trash bag, what?
32 gallons.
That's 32 gallons?
Yes.
A, a single trash bag is a 32-gallon bag?
Right.
Even if I go buy bigger ones? What if I go buy larger trash bags?
Well, you know, that's the, it's supposed to be 32 gallons, only, only from a weight standpoint.
All right.
But like, if you've got a 50-gallon bag full of pine needles, it's not going to weigh more than 50 pounds, so.
Okay.
You know, the, the, some of the pictures that Commissioner Lucy was referring to, those are not 32-gallon bags, those are 50-gallon bags.
My, my point is, is a bag is ambiguous, that's all. And so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner John.
Thank you. Just to get on the record, isn't there a program for people who are disabled to get their cans to the curb? What, what do we do if seniors are disabled if they can't physically move their cans?
I'll let Mr. Martinelli speak to that. There used to be a, a senior discount that was part of a program that was funded, but that was essentially removed. It wasn't a county program, but Waste Management participated in that.
Greg Martinelli for Waste Management. Actually, handicap, get, we'll go get it for free. There's no charge for it.
Okay, so there was a woman here earlier that said she was unable to move the bin if it didn't have wheels on it?
Uh huh.
So she just needs to call you and let
Generally, you know, the, the controlling factor is whether or not there's someone else in the home that can take the container to the street, but if they can't, then we'll go get it for them at the house and bring it back.
Great. I don't think she's here anymore, but maybe somebody could let her know, staff, about that program. Thank you. She signed in. And then another question for you. Here's where I'm in a different situation. I live within the city of Reno, and I don't have a problem with my garbage service, and most of my residents are urban, live in, in an incorporated city, either Sparks or Reno. So I don't have a lot of complaints, frankly, from my citizens, because they're under a different franchise agreement. And so this is the only other thing I got. I got an email, and I want to know how you manage or perform inventory on your sticker program. Let me explain to you. Do they expire?
No.
Okay. Do you have them color-coded so that they can be identified which community they belong in or which franchise agreement?
Yes.
Okay, and so that's, is that the Sparks, Reno, and Washoe County?
And Incline. We've actually seen
See, different colors.
Incline stickers down here, yes.
And you won't take those?
No.
But stickers that are the right color of the community that you live in don't ever expire?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martinelli. That's all I have.
In, out in Palomino Valley, we solved one little problem with the handicap people and whatnot. One family has quite a few kids. They formed their own little business, and they go out and, and get $5 a month from each person, and those people that need help with getting their garbage down to the road. And those little kids are just awesome, and it gives them a little feeling of entrepreneurship, you know, entrepreneur, so I can't even say that word, that's a bad one. But anyhow, the other thing I wanted to say is just going back to the origination of franchise garbage, and we talked about this. It was to keep appliances off the desert. It was to keep, you know, all the other garbage from going out in the desert and, because people couldn't have service, you know, or, or they couldn't afford it or whatever. So now that's still happening, because a lot of stuff can't go to the garbage dump. You know, there's certain items that you can't, can't get rid of. Electronics and stoves, I think, and, and things like that, that they're, it, how does, how do we handle that?
No, you can, you can bring them either to the transfer station or landfill, and we'll take them for free.
For free?
And we'll recycle them, yeah.
Hmm. Televisions, too?
Not, not televisions.
Yeah.
Stoves and appliances.
That's why there's so many of those out there. And then the shooters get blamed for bringing them out and using them for targets when they're already all out there. So anyhow, that's my.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Vice Chair, Burke Pigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Martinelli, I'm curious, you said that they're color-coded. I live in the city of Reno also. I have green and yellow stickers, both.
It's just so we can, just so we know which year is what.
Oh, okay.
But they don't expire.
Yeah.
I mean, you put them on the bag, we're not going to, if you put some Incline ones on your house in Reno, we're not going to take them. But if you've got, yeah.
I, I can understand that, but I just was curious why, if they're all color-coded, we would have, but it's years.
Yeah, right.
And I haven't looked at that, but, yeah.
All right. Okay, so I think, Mr. Martinelli, you've heard kind of all the concerns of not only the constituents in public comment, but also the commissioners. And so I, I want to kind of take this one item by item, if you don't mind. So first and foremost, I want to address the customer service issue. And I think that kind of, customer service and communications, one, communication, communicating the rollout and what the, what the services are going to be available. And, and two, we discussed in the original approval of this, of the agreement that I have here in front of me, the discussion of the ombudsman and what that role is going to be. Have we hired an ombudsman yet? Or have Waste Management hired an ombudsman?
We have, we have an ombudsman, and that actually, I've actually made arrangements for her to come to town to meet with the county to specifically discuss areas of concern. And so, so, because she needs to understand the communication.
Right.
And the reason this person, this person does not fall within the chain of authority of what occurs here in Nevada. And that was important to the other jurisdictions, because they didn't want that person reporting up through the reporting hierarchy, so that there was some, there was a clear distinction between who that person was, and they could actually resolve the issues that were brought by the customer.
Okay, one, one thing that stood out, obviously, myself and Commissioner, it comes from out of from out of town, so this would mean that she's not local.
No, she's not. She's in our Phoenix office.
She's in your Phoenix office?
And she's the Ombudsman for-
So, here's the challenge that I have with an Ombudsman in your Phoenix office. Our client base keeps calling, calling the Phoenix office, yet the individuals in the Phoenix office have no clue, yet no idea what the challenges are here in Washoe County. You do. You live here in Washoe County. They don't. They have no idea. And every time we call there and have discussion, I remember when I was trying to set up my service, and I live in, at my home in the city limits, didn't even know where my street was for three and a half weeks. "Oh, you don't have a street, sir." Well, I guess what, I drive down it, it's there, I promise you. But, but the point that I'm trying to make is that when I have somebody who's not local, acting on, as an Ombudsman for a, a company, that's not solving my problems. That's, why have an Ombudsman, when I should just, why don't you just keep the customer service? Because that's the same thing as I'm already getting. I don't, I need somebody local who knows the challenges, who knows the weather, who knows the conditions, who knows the area, to address issues here locally. And that was the request made by myself and this board, when we decided about this agreement the first time, is that we wanted somebody local to deal with these issues, not somebody outside of, not somebody in Phoenix.
Well, I have to apologize to you for that, because I thought it, I thought you wanted one like the other jurisdictions, where we didn't have that reach. I mean, we can certainly accommodate your, your request.
Okay. And that's what I want to try to get to today. I think that today's is tried to, how do we move forward functionally as, as a group, and, and make this a working relationship that gets us back to where we were, at least, if not improves the service to where, to, to a better standing. So, one, that was one that would, I would make today, is that we would need a, a local customer service representative slash Ombudsman to take care of issues here locally, that have the expertise and understanding of the local area. Because currently, we don't have that. And we don't have a call center here in Reno. So, that's one, one thing I would ask. Another thing I would discuss is the sticker program. You know, and you and I had this discussion in, offline, and we, we met privately, that I think the sticker program is, is, is challenged at best. I'd like to see the sticker program go away. Personally, I'd like to go see, just go back to just the, because one thing that I have heard from the, the citizens is that they're okay with paying the increase in service, if they get the increase in service. They don't want to pay the increase in service, get stickers, or get, when they call Phoenix to get stickers, say, "Ma'am, we already, ma'am, or sir, we've already mailed those out." Well, how do they verify that they for? So, what I'd like to ask for, if we're going to go forward with the sticker program, which I don't want to see if we go forward, because I know all your vehicles, now that they're automated and have all these technological advances, is that they have some kind of an iPad, that we just say, "Okay, I'm at so-and-so address, I see that they have six bags posted here, punch in some six bags," and work out a different system. Because the sticker program, to me, in my opinion, doesn't work. And it seems like, from individuals that have lived in different, different areas, it, there's, there's other ways to deal with it out there. And, we're not getting as many stickers as some of the other places, so I'd like to talk about area-specific service. So, if you live in Galena Forest, or you live in the foothills, and you need that type of service, I'd like for you to, Waste Management staff to work with our staff, start clarifying some of these staff, these areas. Because areas that are specific to the vice chairs in my, my district, that have challenges, are different than, than different, different. So, I'd like to have a range of options available, that deal with, you know, stickers and, and in extra, excess waste. Another challenge that I have is our, we, we discussed the transfer station, and having the May and November cleanup. The May and November cleanup is only functional, though, for individuals that have access to either a vehicle or a trailer to haul that yardage to the transfer station, which is still a challenge at best. Those individuals may not have that ability, but I know Waste Management has what's called Bagsters. You can get them at Home Depot, you can get them delivered to you. Why not, for individuals on a special request, from, from them, you know what, we want to forego our, our, our transportation, we'd like to have Bagsters. We'd like to have you come out and pick up Bagsters. We'd like to have four Bagsters a year, versus having, because we don't have, not everybody has access to that truck or a vehicle. So, those, that's another thing I would ask for. And then, and finally, I'd like to find out what that delta is in, in regards to our cost and our transfer service, to Commissioner Hartung's discussion earlier, in regards, what is the, why, why the increase in cost? We've talked about efficiencies, we've talked about less employment, we've talked about bigger trucks. Why the increase of cost? I need to know what is so, what is driving this increase? And why this dramatic change from where we were in December to where we are today? So, those are my concerns, those are my suggestions to move this, move this agreement forward. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with the chair on, on those issues, the same concerns that I have, obviously, our districts overlap in, in the mountainous areas, and so we see a lot of concerns. Additionally, Cullen Ranch is in my district, and so, through no fault of yours, certainly, or certainly not some of the rest of us, there, it's the city, it's the county, it's the city, it's the county, and that has really been confusing. So, somehow, we need to clarify what we're going to do about service up there, because that, that is also a problem for the county, from the county residents. But, I guess my question for you is, if you, if, if, if this whole process was about getting bigger trucks, then why did we, why have we stopped letting citizens have the six extra bags at every pickup?
Well, the process wasn't about getting bigger trucks. The process initiated based on the desire for single-stream recycling to be added to the service offerings. That's what started the discussion. Actually, this started back in 2008, and a, and a customer came up, or a resident came up earlier and talked about the difference between the jurisdictions. And absolutely, and I actually tried to get a regional franchise, starting back in 2008, so we wouldn't have that discussion. Everybody's service offerings would be the same, everybody's rate would be the same, and we wouldn't have all these variables, whether your stickers are green, or yellow, or orange, whatever color they are. But that wasn't something that, that the community wanted to embrace. So, we ended up having to go on a different path, and now there's still three separate franchises here. You know, I still hold out hope that someday, maybe we can get a consolidated agreement, but I, I don't know if it'll occur in my lifetime.
Too logical.
Yes. So, so that was the primary driver. The, Washoe County is required by state law to have a curbside recycling program. And what we had found with the basket program that we used to have, was that we were getting less and less participation because of the inefficiency of using that particular program. It didn't take cardboard. People didn't want to get things dripped all over their clothes when they were going to work in the morning, when taking their baskets out to the curb. So, folks just quit using it. They used it to store their oral cans in, they used it to prop their boat up, a lot of different things, but it wasn't used for the purpose in which it was designed. So, fewer and fewer people started, kept recycling. So, we needed to come up with a system, and the, single-stream recycling, of course, is the, is, was the cutting-edge technology at the time, in order to improve the recycling. Since that time, the Washoe County Health District has passed a, a directive that by 2020, our, our recycling percentage will be at 35%. We're now hovering around 31%. So, we needed to come up with a program that would, that would, would allow us to reach that goal, and that's where single-stream recycling came in. And then probably more in the urban part of Washoe County, or suburban part of Washoe County, as opposed to the rural part of Washoe County, the, the, the cry was louder. And I say that because when I drive through Field Creek, or, or Saddlehorn in that area, on, on recycling day, you know, 90% of the people had their recycling carts out. So, it was embraced by those people, maybe not so much in some of the rural areas, although there, there has been pretty decent participation. But we've also had significant contamination in the recycling containers, which is another problem all in and of itself. So, that's what drove a lot of the discussion. And I can assure you that everything that we provided you in this agreement were things that were asked for. But I don't dispute the fact that they're not working out the way as planned. So, we've got to fix those, obviously. You know, I commit to each of you that we'll do that. We will, we will get it fixed. We'll figure out a solution to, to solve the problem. But we have to, we have to figure out something different, other than the way it was. Because these automated trucks, if the driver has to get out of the truck to, to pick up the bags, it, it causes an efficiency issue. So, that's the reason, the, the, the May and November days came out of a cab, Commissioner Lucy's actually, it, in the fall of 14, I believe, it's, all the years start to run together here, but maybe 15. And, because we'd originally offered a period in the fall to deal with leaves. And the folks in the county will says, "Well, what about our fire preparation for the summer months?" You know, "We need something in the, in the spring." And so, that's where the genesis of the May period came from. So, instead of six weeks in the fall, it was four in the spring and four in the fall. So, that's where that came from. Nothing magical about May. There was just, you know, we left language that provided that the parties could agree to a different time period, if it's more conducive. And so, that will be something I think we need to look at as probably a solution to some of these problems. I don't have, I don't have all the answers for you today. I mean, I certainly understand the problems, but I don't have all the answers. Beginning on Monday, the folks can leave the extra six bags out with their service for the month. So, hopefully, over this next four-week period, we can certainly bring something back to you that will be conducive to, to address some of the needs that you've each addressed today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One more question.
Yes.
So, or, comment, not really a question. So, I, I think then, what we need to look at, maybe something that Mr. Schiller has indicated, is a basic service plus. So, the people who live in Galena Forest, for instance, they're going to have those bags way more often than twice, two months out of the year. Because needles, pine needles fall off of pine trees year-round, and they create a problem. Pine cones fall off of pine trees year-round, and they create a problem. And once they're off, they're very, very fire-prone. And so, that's, that's when, when you, when you sit down with, with staff and start looking at it again, that's an issue that's got to be addressed in some manner. Perhaps in the manner that we did at Incline, whatever, I don't know what the answer is. But there has to be an answer for the people who live in those fire-prone areas, and have this constant problem of, of fire danger. I, I mean, the, I agree with everything that everybody said. The last thing we want to do is say, "Oh, well, we should have." And, you know, if, if, if Nevada Division of Forestry had done what they said they were going to do, and been up there, we would not have had the Little Valley fire. That, we don't want to be in that position again. And so, we need to address this upfront. And, and that really is a problem throughout that entire area. I think Commissioner Hartung is absolutely correct. It's not as much a problem in much of his district, or in much of Commissioner Herman's district, because it's a different type of ground. I mean, there's a different type of, wildfires are different than they are in the Galena Forest area. So, I know our fire chief might disagree with that, because he fights them everywhere. But definitely in an area where there are lots of trees, lots of pine trees, and all of the other issues that we're dealing with, we have got to have a solution that allows these people to resolve their problem on a monthly basis. However, we're going to do that, I, I don't have an answer for it either, but it definitely needs to be addressed. Thank you.
One of the reasons we, one of the reasons we made the recommendation, which you folks adopted, was the increase of the franchise fees beginning next year. And that was so that would create basically a pool of funds that you could use in each of your districts to deal with these unique situations. Because, you know, if we take care of the, if we take care of the pine needles in your district and Commissioner Lucy's district, it doesn't take care of Commissioner Hartung and Commissioner Herman. So, whether that's something that makes sense, I don't know. But that was the theory behind trying to offer, offer it. Because trying to adopt a community-wide program that is, has all these basically four or five different types of, of environments, is, is, it's complicated. So, but I understand your concern, I appreciate the comments.
Mr. Martinelli, I have a quick question, just off, off the cuff. How, do you have any, have we had any clients or customers within the area, within incorporated area, that had put out, in addition to their Waste Wheeler, six bags every service day for 52 weeks?
Uh, no.
So, you've never had one customer?
Not when I was on a truck.
I'm close to that.
Okay. Hold on, this is a business meeting. Thank you. This is a business meeting. We're going to conduct it ourselves in that form. So, my question is, if we're not, if there's not a customer out there, each individual customer that's putting out 52 bag, or 52, every 52 pickups, six bags each, then they're not, then we're, there's no way we're getting close to those weight limits. You know, maybe one out of every, one out of every six customers, or maybe one out of every 10 customers a week, is utilizing maybe that six bags. But it's not every customer, every week, all six bags.
No.
Never seen that kind of weight.
No. I mean, you know, probably, maybe at this time of year, in the spring cleanup, you would see it more frequently, but you're still not going to see it with all 35,000 customers.
But you measure those capacity levels, is what I'm asking. As you see trucks, I mean, you see, you see upticks in, in tonnage coming into the, into the landfill?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay. So, you can track that?
Yes.
That looks like. Okay. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, this was, this was a bit of a challenge. And, and Mr. Schiller, you and I were on the same page as this. The, the two months that we had decided, the spring and fall cleanup months, my impression, when, when this whole thing went away, was not six bags additional, but they could leave out their yard waste. And, and I did not realize that there was a, a limit on that. And, you know, you remember, Mr. Schiller, we had that conversation. I, I don't think you realized it. I don't, I'm not sure that you realized it, Mr. Chairman, but I, I, I did not realize that, that when we had that original conversation, that it was going to be six bags only, so a total of 24 additional bags, for the, let's say, you know, the, the spring months, or the fall months, average, in each month. The other issue is, there's no way, and I have a friend who lives in Southern California, and I'm going to complicate things. He actually has a third bin, which is compostable. It's a compostable bin. And, and all that can go in that is yard waste, grass clippings, anything that can be composted. I'm not sure whether he's supposed to put his dog waste in there, but I know he does. I understand, I'm just telling you, that's, that's what, that's, that's one of the challenges. I don't, I don't think it's supposed to go in, but I know he does. So, that's, that's one of the, that's one of the, the challenges that we have in our region, that we don't have a composting feature. And then, it was mentioned, and I, this is something I'd like our staff to get back to us on. There was a speaker earlier who said, "The differential between Incline and those of us who are lowlanders is," I use that term affectionately, I being one, "is a 60 cent a month charge." That was what somebody had claimed, and I don't, I don't know whether there's any truth in that statement. So, I'd certainly like staff to come back to us, to, I'd like to see that differential between Incline and, and Washoe County, and what the, and, and I, I know that Incline also, and maybe they've built this in, most of the people in Incline probably have bear containers. So, maybe there's a, some additional fees that are built in, that, they don't have Incline? Incline doesn't have bear containers?
It's an optional service.
It's an optional service. Okay.
Well, I-
So, it's not, it's not a required service?
All right.
They've got a zero tolerance policy. So, if you have an animal event, they will make it mandatory, and you'll have to have one.
And I know some HOAs, because I have friends who live in areas that have HOAs, and they require it, period, end of discussion. They, they require some type of either a built-in bear container, or a bear container that you guys have supplied.
Right.
So, those-
Commissioner, I have that, I have that information, if you'd like it. 96 gallon service at Incline, or here is 2270, at Incline, it's 2543.
Versus 2270?
Yes.
And that's inclusion of that 96 stickers?
Yes. Actually, they've had that, they've had that pine needle program up there for several years. They increased their, it used to be 72 stickers, it went to 96 stickers with the new agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
So, all right. Seeing the further comments from the commission, I think you've got, so, thank you, Mr. Martinelli, for your time today. I appreciate it. So, Mr. Schiller, what I'm, I'm going to ask you to come back up, and here's what I feel we need to do. At this time, you know, obviously, we have, we, back in our December meeting, took a vote and agreed to move forward with the current new franchise agreement with Waste Management. I have not executed that agreement, but will- I have not executed that agreement, but will, based upon the direction of this board and by direction from our DA's office, that that needs to be done. But this is what I would ask. I would ask for, one thing that we worked in here, to Commissioner Hartung's point, was that at ninety days, which we're coming up on ninety days of operation of technically this agreement, that we have these discussions going forward in regards to future needs and assessments. I think we discussed a number of things today. One, as a priority, customer service. It is paramount, it is something that needs to be discussed, it needs to be handled and dealt with here locally. And I appreciate your challenges with that, Mr. Martinelli, but this is something that needs to be handled here, so I would direct you and staff to deal with that and come up with a solution for a local ombudsman and a local situation for customer service. Two, excess, an excess bag rate, what that looks like. You know, if we're changing, if we're going to, you know, add excess bags so that we have air specific, you know, whether that's Waste Management, you know, tier one plus, whether that includes equestrian service, whatever that may be, but options. Other options available specifically to those areas. Three, a large parcel rate. We're looking for a large parcel rate and make sure that the large parcels have maybe potential to put out bags year round. But they'll pay for that rate based upon that large parcel rate and what that would look like. You know, I really would like to go back to the tablet versus stickers. There are smart automated trucks. There's no reason they can't have a tablet in there and somehow figure out some kind of program. You know, if we're going to keep the sticker program, which I would rather move in the direction of options so that we have, each individual knows exactly what they're getting, and they're not having to go out there with a sticker all the time. And the road, and the weather road issues, and with private roads and county roads, if our fire trucks and our ambulances and our services can get there, I sure hope that a garbage truck can go. I do not want to have a phone call saying, well, I didn't pick up my trash this week because they said the road was too. Now, I understand this was a very unique winter, and we had some challenging events this year. But that does not make up for, if you're not going to make it there on Sunday, on Monday, then you better be there Tuesday. And that's just how that needs to be. And there needs, there should be no, and to Commissioner or Vice Chair Burke Bigler's point, there needs to be some ramifications, some sort of fallback in regards to the franchise. They have to have, there has to be some stick in the game that we can impose some sort of sanction or something from this board to Waste Management for non-conformance of this agreement. And then, one thing that we have discussed, that, you know, Commissioner Herman discussed earlier, is exemption and options. You know, exemptions from her area and specific residents within their groups, what their exemptions would look like, and what the mandatory requirement would be from Washoe County for those residents to exempt out of the trash service. You know, and make sure that that's not challenging for our residents to do so. But if they would so like to, and open that up to open market. Allow some of the other vendors within the area to, if they do exempt themselves from the franchise agreement, that they can be serviced by some of the other individuals within the community. So I would like to see those options brought back and this agreement moved forward as soon as possible, rapidly.
For the record, Kevin Schiller, so just to clarify, would you like that to come back in the format of a revised draft contract or an amended draft contract that identifies that? Or summarized in a staff report along with that identified draft contract?
Well, a summarized draft, a summarized draft contract and what that amendment would look like to this. And I think this goes to Commissioner Jung's discussion earlier of having a contract committee or somebody to evaluate that and have eyes on by each one of the commissioners that may have, you know, they all, each commissioner has individual concerns with this agreement. Their ability to, one, look at the, look at the summarized contract, the agreement, the summarized amendment, and then address them in the actual hard amendment with the DA's office. So I'd like to make sure that we go through this with a fine tooth comb, every commissioner has that ability.
And then the secondary piece would be working with the Health District, the exemption. That would come through the Health District. There is a cost associated with an exemption, there's an application, a review, and then that exemption gets approved along with a fee. Just so everybody's clear before we come back, that the cost for that exemption is about half the cost of the just standard trash service at the time that the application, I think, is approved. But we will have the Health District here with us and work with them on that.
Great, all right. Commissioner Hartung, you have, you're signed in. I want to make sure, we need to move along here.
I do, no, this is, this is one last thing. And, Mr. Schiller, what I want to know is, Incline is two seventy-three per month higher. I want to know what that differential is in terms of the service quantity? So it's sixty-eight cents a week, what do they get for that sixty-eight cents? It's actually sixty-eight point two-five cents per week. What's the additional that they get for that? Is it one tote, is it, what do they get? I'd like to know what that differential is. Okay? Just bring it back to us, it's okay. That's, I think that, that, because, because there's assertions in the public, and while we're having this conversation right now, but there's assertions in the public that Incline gets some kind of a, you know, a different option. And what I'd like to know is, I'd like to have that option quantified. And how is that possible that, it's not possible, but how is it that they get that option? And is it possible for us to have that option, especially in certain places? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Herman.
So am I to understand that each person would be paying for an exemption?
That is correct.
What if the whole, like all of Rancho Haven, Sierra Ranches, where all the trouble was that and Palomino Valley? What if all the people signed up or signed a petition? Would that work? Well, I just need to know.
Greg Martinelli, Commissioner Herman. We actually mentioned this to the Health District at our bi-monthly meeting last week. And they are amenable to entertain something like that. But as Mr. Schiller said, there is a application fee. And then there's a requirement that the citizenry would be able to prove to the Health District what they are doing with their waste on a weekly basis. So in other words, they would have to prove through a receipt from a disposal facility that they actually got rid of that material.
Oh, just like people could do on a regular basis now.
Right.
There are those individual exemptions, but.
Right.
About a blanket type thing.
I'm just telling you what they told me. That doesn't mean that the Health District may not entertain another option based on, of excluding an entire area.
Right, okay.
Okay?
I'll work on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. All right, so at this time, I'm going to make a motion to acknowledge the update and provide the direction that we've given staff today to come back with a summarized amendment to the current franchise agreement for ratification at a later time in day.
Second?
I have a motion, I have a motion. Okay, lost it there. Madam Clerk, do you have this going here? All right, here we are. I make the motion.
Second?
I have a second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post your vote. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your vote. Motion carries unanimously for future, all right, thank you very much. We are done with that. Mr. Manager, we are going to take a recess for lunch. It is now two to one, two o'clock. Does that work for everybody? We'll be back at two o'clock, everybody, we're in recess. Good afternoon, everybody, welcome back. No. Welcome back, we are going to come out of recess, we are back in session for the Board of County Commissioners' April twenty-fifth meeting. This is our regular business meeting. We left off this morning, or an hour ago, with the conclusion of the trash discussion. Now we are going to move on, once again, to our kind of altered agenda today. So at this time, we're going to take item fourteen. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, item fourteen is possible action, policy discussion and direction of staff to gift Washoe County general funds to cover the cost of county building permit fees, including any applicable county plan review fees for affected properties in Lemon Valley, where insurance does not cover the cost of permits for repairs necessitated by the recent flooding events in early two thousand seventeen of Swan Lake and the surrounding area, and direct the appropriate staff to make necessary general fund budget adjustments. The potential gifting of fees would be limited to those properties which were either red or yellow tagged, meaning a red tag indicating a building is unsafe for occupancy or entry, and a yellow tag warrants restrictions on occupancy and reuse of the property per adopted building code by Washoe County Building and Safety or the Washoe County Health District, and where insurance coverage does not include the permit fee.
Okay. All right, Mr. Solero.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
At this time, do any commissioners need an update, discussion? Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for being here, Mr. Solero, I just, I just have a question. And this is something that we really do need to talk about. I really don't have issues in District Four, but I do know that there are some issues farther south. Is this process by which we are foregoing permit fees for red and yellow tagged buildings, are we going to apply that to other commissioned districts? Should someone come up and say, hey, look, I've got, I've got damage and it needs to be repaired? Because I actually know of some places that were, I don't know whether they've been red tagged, so that, so I want to qualify that statement. But I know places that were damaged in Commissioner Lucy's district, some people who work for some other agencies. And I know one fellow literally lost his garage because it was an outbuilding to his home. So are we going to, since we're, since we're offering this for the Lemon Valley folks, are we going to offer this for other folks that may be coming forward with red tag issues in other areas?
For the record, Dave Solero, Director of Community Services Department, to the Commissioner through the chair. I think that's really the question that we are trying to ask the board. We have specifically, you know, brought this forward at a request from a public meeting specific to Lemon Valley, trying to put some, some guardrails, so to speak, around this. Since this is not something that I've found any precedence for within the county, there's a sister item to this being held by the District Board of Health on Thursday related to septic systems that may have failed. But we were trying to, you know, as staff, we were sitting around discussing, you know, what makes the most sense, the community has requested this. But really, that's a policy discussion for you, the Board of County Commissioners, to help, help us administer this program. As it turns out, it's not as simple as just waiving a fee within the enterprise fund. And, you know, if there are questions related to that, I'm hopeful that Mr. Librelli can help me answer the reason behind the term gifting from another fund for, specific for the enterprise fund associated with the building enterprise fund. But really, I'm here to ask you, we have heard from the community that this is something they've requested, and I'm here to get some direction from the board on policy and kind of where this thing should end up countywide.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Follow up. And it was suggested by a member of the public earlier that, you know, what's the, what would the time limit be? And I mean, that's, you know, that's always an issue. I know a number of years ago, when I pulled a permit for a remodel on my home, I believe it was good, and correct me if I'm wrong, either you or Mr. Smith can correct me. But I think it was good for eighteen months.
Correct.
And that's, that's what memory had served me. And I, and the only time that there's an extension on that is when the project, and I'm going to, I'm going to screw up the wording, I already know, but it was a project of monumental proportions, as I recall, there's some caveat. And I, of course, came into the Building Department and argued that this was a project of monumental proportions. Just put it in perspective, it was monumental for me because I was paying for it out of my pocket. And he said, no, it's really when you have a scenario like, let's say, one of, a developer is building a hotel, a very large project. And in fact, he used at the time, and this was, I don't remember Kimball's father's name, Kimball Corbridge's father, he was the head of Building and Safety, so that's how far back it's going. It's okay. Mr. Corbridge informed me, he said it's, it's really more like when there's a project, let's say, like he used the MGM Grand, which is now owned by somebody different. But, you know, those projects typically take longer than eighteen months. And so when they pull a permit, those kinds of things, that's where that caveat came into, into code. So I don't, I don't know how we would deal with extensions and requiring longer periods of time. I don't, I don't know how we're set up to deal with that, so.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Herman.
So in regards to the flood, are there any others that we aren't aware of? I mean, we have a certain number that are red tagged and a certain number that are yellow tagged. Are there others that you've done, you know, considering this storm?
Right, so the question we have is really the distinguishment, I think, between outbuildings, garages, those sorts of things versus living spaces. And so the things that we have red and yellow tagged are the livable structure within the properties. So these are the only ones that we have red tagged throughout the county through the two floods that we've had as far as, you know, being damaged due to circumstances potentially related to the flood. You know, we did, we did not determine that the flood caused the damage. We simply went in and, you know, based on the buildings being in the area, determined that they have some structural issues that need to be, need to be dealt with because they're not necessarily in conformance with the Washoe County Building Code. And so that's what we red tagged and yellow tagged within the, within the boundary of the flooded area that we had in Lemon Valley. So, so there could be other locations throughout the county where a garage was impacted. That person needs to do sheet rock work or, you know, replace electrical, which would require a permit. But we have not physically gone out and inspected all of those homes and tagged those buildings.
Okay. Anything further, Mr. Chairman?
So should we put some specifics on this?
I think that's the intent for today, is to kind of outline what those specifics are. And so my discussion, you know, and Commissioner Hartung kind of spurred this, is that, one, you know, obviously, there's Little Valley Fire residents that were impacted and lost homes and needed, and were red tagged and needed to rebuild those homes and what those fees. And so my concern is that, you know, one, are we setting precedent in making sure that our residents are taken care of going forward with any natural disaster? I think that's, one, I think it's of great importance. I think it's what we do, and I think that's what we need to continue to do, is make sure that every resident has the ability to rebuild and try to get back to what their normal life was prior to the incident before this. However, my discussion is specifically, you know, in regards to Lemon Valley. Lemon Valley is challenged at some of these homes that are red tagged. We know now, if this, if this situation, Little Valley Fire is, the high probability of that happening again and happening in the same capacity is a different ratio than the ratio that would be, what are the probabilities of Swan Lake flooding again? You know, we know. You know, we know that that could potentially flood again, and what that looks like and what that's going to be. So do we change with these building permits? Do we set, you know, do you set precedents? I mean, do you set some parameters on these building permits that, you know, they have to adhere to a different, because currently, they're building the home is impacted. Do we need to raise their footing levels so that they're outside of the floodplain? Do we need to address certain areas with their outbuildings, something like that? I don't have a problem with paying for their permits. I just want to make sure that within these areas that we know are going to be, there's going to be some recidivism to this type of an event, that we've put in some parameters that, yes, we will pay for your building permit, but we need you to make sure that we're gonna help, try to do what we can to prevent this from happening again. You know, we can't foresee everything, but we're gonna try to prevent this from happening going forward. Secondly, I think that if we're going to do this, there needs to be a window. And the windows are twofold. One, you want a window to apply, you know, and Mr. Cleus had pointed out earlier today that he may not rebuild this year, or in six months, or in 24 months. But I think that if he knows that we are gonna have this option, opportunity, that from the date of said event, or from the date of said red tagging, that there's a window of time for him to come in and imply, say, I'm eventually going to rebuild, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, make the modifications and repair my home, I want a placeholder so that when I, that when I come in, that I get this building permit and these fees waived at that time, you know, in perpetuity, because it may take him three years, four years, who knows? Who knows what the challenges may do? There might be some significant instance in that individual's family or whatever that may preclude them from doing so in a timely manner. So I don't want to say, yeah, well, you had it, but because you've missed the envelope, you can't really do it, you know, in two years. So I think, in my opinion, it would be nice to, or it would be beneficial for individuals if we, as long as they came and implied and said, hey, I was red-tagged, I'm a home within distress, I plan on rebuilding on the same site, I need to have a placeholder. You know, I don't know when that's going to be, but that placeholder for me to utilize that waiving of fees. So, those are my comments. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to get on the record some clear boundaries of this direction to staff to do this gift, which indeed it is a gift. No outbuildings, no garages, nothing that is not a primary residence, do I believe, should be waived their permit fees. I know you don't, but you would imagine who would get in line and want this. Sorry, I'm having a conversation with the audience. Make sure it is very well investigated and identified that these were red and yellow-tagged, as well as they have to be something that is not a remodel, but rather a re-haul because of damage, and that the, we have to get a certification from their insurance companies that they will not, that they have denied paying the permit fee, because insurance companies might as well pay your fees when you rebuild. So as long as we have those parameters, I don't have a problem with this, and as you know, we'll be hearing this on Thursday for the sewer, for the septic tanks issues at the District Board of Health. But it needs to be a finite time in which they are able to apply for this, in terms of the, you know, how much, how further we'd have to go back to prove these things if they want this gift. So it needs, we need to have a deadline or a cutoff of when they apply for that, and it can't go into perpetuity, like, it can't go with the property, for instance, if nobody ever does their remodel, that free permit shouldn't go to the next homeowner.
Correct.
So I don't have a problem with voting for this, as long as we are keeping this very tight boundaries in our lane so that the county isn't being taken advantage of. And when I say the county, I'm talking about the whole other half a million people that aren't getting this type of gift. So, and I echo what you said, this can't happen again. So there has to be some requirements that they elevate, or they do something that shows that they are able to keep this home from being flooded again.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I had exactly, almost verbatim, what Commissioner Jung, well done. You must have passed the mind-reading class. I failed miserably. Three times I took it and I still failed it. You know, how do we ensure that the insurance company is not covering the cost of the permit? That's a huge deal, and, you know, that's sort of double-dipping, as it were. And then, one of the things that we absolutely, and this could be a little tougher, but one of the things that I think we need to look at is if we are going to forego the cost of the permit, we want to ensure that the damage and the red tag was actually caused by flooding. And I know that that can be a little difficult, but there may be some places where it's sort of outside of the active flood zone that things have been red-tagged, and I want to know if indeed it was something that was caused by the flood itself. And then, I agree with my colleagues, we have to set a reasonable timeframe for the work to be completed. Now, what's reasonable? Let's define reasonable, because the building department has said that 18 months is a reasonable timeframe, from the time that you pull the permit till the time that the work is completed, they say that that's a reasonable timeframe. Maybe that's not a reasonable timeframe for something of this nature, maybe it's 24 months, or maybe it's 36 months, but I agree with Commissioner Jung. I do not want this to go into perpetuity. It does not follow the property, it's not part of the title where, you know, the next, let's just say that the house has to be raised, and then the next property owner stepping in gets to go, gets to forego, rather, all of the fees, rather than paying them to build a new house. And of course, and I agree completely with the Chairman, if it is in an active flood zone and we are foregoing the permits, you need to demonstrate that you have raised the level of the foundation higher than the known FEMA flood height.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, thank you, Commissioner Hartong. Manager Slaughter.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I pushed the button over there. This item is the first opportunity for the Board to discuss this concept in a public meeting and give direction to the staff on what, if anything, the Commissioners want to see pursued. It's tricky, because you're talking about spending taxpayer dollars, and taxpayer dollars can be spent only on public purposes. So you have to find a connection to a public purpose in order to be able to have a program like this, which really pays private citizens to some of the costs of building or rebuilding. The reason, Mr. Solero alluded to this in his introductory comments, the reason you can't take it directly from the enterprise fund in the Building and Safety Division is, those are fees, and fees cover costs. And so if you had the Building and Safety Fund subsidize the permit costs for certain applicants, the other fee payers would be charged more, in effect, to cover those costs. So the only way this works, potentially only way this works legally, is for the general fund, which contains money that's raised by taxes instead of fees, and some of the tax revenues can be spent by the county in furtherance of public purposes. The general fund can cover those costs on behalf of the enterprise fund, but that still requires the Board to make a finding, and this will take some work from staff and the Board, as to why this potential expenditure furthers a public purpose. So when the Board decides what direction to give the staff to explore and what to bring back, we will work with the staff to provide the legal guidance to try and find a way through the statutory requirements, which are many. The county's money has to be accounted for in certain funds, budgets have to meet certain state regulatory requirements, and all the safeguards that are in effect to make sure that public money is spent appropriately, we'll have to find a way in that system for a program like this to work.
Thank you, Mr. Librelli. Commissioner Herman.
So, it could be that it'll be two years, maybe, where everything's dried out enough to really do foundations, if that was necessary, or to, you know, and the problem that I see, some of the reasons why I had suggested this or brought it up is because FEMA, it wasn't a big enough incident for FEMA to fork over some money for the, you know, to help, like they do in other areas when there's 5,000 homes damaged, you know? But, and then, you know, is there a way that we could fund this gift through the state monies that we received? Because that's another thing I was thinking that possibly could work. Just an idea.
Mr. Chair, I don't know that the source of funding and the amount of funding is at issue. It's more the connection to the public purpose, as pointed out by council. So the source of funding and the amount of funding, I don't know, is that issue, really?
Okay. So if, if you made a, use this, like, say, you have to apply for your permit within two years, because it may take that long, and you can renew it one time, something like that, then that would just about cover, hopefully. But I don't think that very many of the folks in Lemon Valley have insurance that's gonna cover them to rebuild or anything like that. And the only way that they would be able to afford to raise their homes would be to go through the flood board. So, just some things to think about.
Yeah, and I think, so, I mean, Mr. Solero, you, I think you've got plenty of direction from us today in regards to this, you know, and I agree with Commissioner Herman in the sense that, you know, there needs to be time to assess this, so that 18-month window may not be enough to assess all those damages. But I agree with Commissioner Hartong and Jung that the, once the permit, you can apply for a placeholder, and that'll hold for a period of time, and once that permit is actually called upon, the work has to be done within, you know, that's what I'd like to see. And I agree, it has to stay in perpetuity. It's not in perpetuity, it has to stay with the individual that pulled the permit on said subject property, has to be validated by us that the property wasn't, the permitting wasn't paid for by an insurance agency, and that the damage was truly caused by flood damage or any natural disaster that would have caused or initiated this red tagging. Those are my challenges with the direction, so. I have public comment signed in, so I'd like to take public comment, unless you have something to respond.
I do have just one thing, kind of a point of clarification, just before we get to public comment. I've written down a lot of things, some, kind of some discussion that you had here. Excuse me. I think, you know, Mr. Librelli's gonna let me know, there's probably two ways that this can go. We can make a motion today to try to, you know, to try to get something figured out, a finite program, listing what the public purpose is, or potentially, I can take this, work with legal, and bring something back to you for a final decision at a later date. I just want to throw that out there before we get too far down the road. We can certainly have public discussion, and then maybe you can give me some solid direction.
Yeah, let's do that, and we'll give you some further direction after then.
Thank you.
So first, I have signed in Ms. Tammy Holt Still.
For the record, Tammy Holt Still. I like what you guys had to say. I do have some issues regarding Commissioner Hartong as far as the fact that there's, at this time, the record is, 15 homes have been red-tagged by the county, which means the fact that they are not livable in the condition that they are in, or should not be lived in. Okay? So based upon trying to certify whether the flood caused it, at this point, they were damaged because of the flood. There was water around the homes, that's why Washoe County was out. So some of the definitions I see coming out might be just a little harsh or a little stringent than what they really need to be, considering we know exactly how many homes have been red-tagged, how many homes have been yellow-tagged. You guys, you have that information. Also, you can't sell a home if it's red-tagged, so it can't go forward. Common sense is on that one. If a home is red-tagged, it cannot be sold until those damages are fixed. So, common sense has to come into it somewhere, and I'm a common person, and those are things that I know of, as a homeowner. So I like where you guys are going with it, and I applaud that. Just remember that there's some things that, I understand your concerns, but we know how many homes we're working with.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Danny Cleus.
Danny Cleus, for the record, when I mention a timeframe, it's not about how long it's gonna take to rebuild my house. It's basically about two years down the road before I can start to rebuild my house. Right now, my insurance, like a lot of us in Lemon Valley, are fighting them. My insurance was cancelled, is denied twice, because back in the day, when they built these houses, they were built on the silt. The insurance company says that is a dirt problem, not a water problem. So that's why it's gonna take me and several others longer to apply for this permit. I like your idea, Mr. Lucy, of putting us on a waiting list for it. It's a good point. And like Tammy said, we can't sell our houses if they're red-tagged, so that will not go over to somebody else. My house might get demolished and just might sell the land, but like everything else, it's up to insurance companies, it's not up to the individual, or I would do it right now. Another thing is, people that have pulled permits, I know of two, are they gonna get reimbursed when we get this? That's another question we have. We were told before, if something like this did go through, that the people that already pulled permits would get reimbursed, and that's another question that we have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleus. Bring it back to the Board. Just one second. Just a point of clarification, too, you know, from public comment. I think one of the directions, one of the reasons we, Commissioners had pointed out that we wanted the property, obviously, this to stay with the property, and it obviously not been sold, because there had been some challenges with people trying to move a said permit and said, you know, I don't want to rebuild in this, my one piece of property, I found another piece of property in another corporate area, I want to move that building permit. So we're trying to make sure the policy stays specific to that home, that parcel, that builder. That's really what I think we want to hone in on, is not being able to move anything and move it around, so it's specifically a benefit for that individual, and it's just a policy thing, it's not a individual. So clarifications are, Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and one thing that, a comment by the public, and I respect the positions, but damaged homes can be sold for cash. There's guys out there that, you know, I buy houses or something like that, I see the guys truck around all the time, and he, yeah, and they don't finance houses, they just walk in and pay cash for them, and, you know, it's a done deal. So I agree with the Chairman, it has to stay with the property owner at the time of the incident. And then, you know, one of the, one of the big deals for us, while I recognize that there are 15 right now, and I have to look at the number, I think there's, did I see 13 red tags?
Twelve red tags.
Twelve red tags.
Yep.
Twelve, and then, how many yellow tags?
Let's see, we show another 11 currently.
11?
One was converted from a yellow to a green last week.
Okay, so 23 tags in all. Twelve and 11.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. So here's, here's the challenge for us, and that is when we spend public funds, this is, this is, these are public funds. These are, these belong to everybody. We have to ensure that we are using them properly and wisely. And, and the real question that I think that we have to answer and legal has to come back to us is, is how does this change situations moving forward? And will we set a precedent for ourselves? Because, you know, the, you, Commissioner Lucy, you are talking about the Little Valley incident, and, and we certainly have problems there. There's no question that that needs to be addressed. But what if my house just burns to the ground in, let's say, Verde because I left oily rags on my deck? Then should, should that permit also, because that's a...
No, and I think, I think the discussion has always been natural disaster.
I want to make sure. That's all I'm saying. That's, that's an accident, but it, that, we really need to make sure that our parameters are very, very tight. That's my only point.
Absolutely agree.
That's my only point, Mr. Chairman, and that is, we, this is a very slippery slope for us.
Absolutely.
And, and so when we start using and spending public funds of this nature, and it's not a suggestion that we don't do this, that is not the suggestion at all. I just want to make sure that all of the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and the periods are all in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slaro, you feel you've got the direction you need?
I do. There's one, one item. I've got a list of seven items here, pretty clear, pretty, pretty direct. One item, I would, would like a little bit more direction regarding. That's the, regarding, regarding that, that this item must be proven to be a cause, as caused by the flood. I'm just concerned that you're, that we would potentially be putting Washoe County staff in a position, much like an insurance company is currently with one of our constituents, you know, saying, hey, this isn't flood-related, or it is flood-related. I'm not so sure that that's a position that I would like to get our staff involved in. And based on the numbers, I would suggest that, you know, potentially regardless of what caused the damage to that structure, it is a damaged structure in the area within the flood area. If, if we follow the other parameters that you've lined out here, one, two, three, four properties that I know of don't have insurance that are impacted with red or yellow tags. So I think the numbers are getting pretty tiny. So I would, I would just request that potentially when this comes back to you, if we can have that discussion around whether, you know, staff, it needs to be the one to determine whether this was flood-related or not.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, for some clarification, I've toured Lemon Valley and I know that there's a couple of houses being built. And perhaps an inspector goes out and finds out that, that that house is not fit and he red-taggs it for whatever reason. That is not in the recognized flood zone. So those are, those are the kinds of things that I want to make sure. It's not a suggestion of, of these houses so much. It's a suggestion of things that could potentially come into play and, and making sure, I'm relatively confident that the situation that we're dealing with right now is, is related to flood. Whether it's, it got red-tagged because the foundation sunk, which is obviously flood-related, even though it may have not been in, you know, a flood area, you know, where water actually entered the residence itself, but the ground became super saturated and, and was no longer capable of handling the weight of the foundation of the home. So that, to me, that's still flood-related. But I don't want to get into a scenario where we say, okay, anything in Lemon Valley.
All right.
Got it.
Thank you. All right. So looking for a motion at this time.
Move to approve the comments, concerns, and to direct staff to come back with the final project that we can, that legal obviously has blessed and that we can endorse.
Second, I have a motion. Commissioner Jung, will you?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, guys.
Thank you. And I have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Hartung. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right. We will call, will you answer the vote?
And Mr. Chair, we've neglected to note for the record when we came back from the lunch break.
Commissioner Burke Bickler is in, is absent.
And that's why you only have four votes reflected on your screen. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So let the record show the motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Burke Bickler in, being absent. All right. We are on to, we are going to now take item 17. So I'm going to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, this is a public hearing. This is item 17, Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 17-0002 and Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 17-0001, Lemon Valley Properties for Possible Action. Hearing and Discussion to Affirm the Findings of the Planning Commission and to, one, to adopt an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan, North Valleys Area Plan Master Plan Map that reconfigures the location of rural and suburban residential master plan categories on six parcels to conform more closely to the topography of the area. If approved, the amendment would change plus or minus 25.3 acres of the property currently designated rural to suburban residential and would change plus or minus 25.3 acres of the property currently designated suburban residential to rural. The overall amount of acreage on the property designated rural will remain the same at plus or minus 139.816 acres, and the amount of acreage designated suburban residential will also remain the same at plus or minus 68.797 acres after a determination of conformance with the Trucking Mills Regional Plan by the Trucking Mills Regional Planning Commission. And two, subject, subject to final approval of the associated master plan change to adopt an amendment to the North Valleys Regulatory Zone map that reconfigures the location of general rural, one dwelling per 40 acres, and median density suburban, three dwellings per acre, regulatory zones on six parcels to conform more closely to the, to the topography of the area. If approved, the amendment would change plus or minus 25.3 acres of the property currently zoned general rural to medium density suburban and would change plus or minus 25.3 acres of the property currently zoned medium density suburban to general rural. However, the overall amount of acreage on the property zoned general rural will remain the same at plus or minus 139.816 acres, and the amount of acreage zoned medium density suburban will also remain the same at plus or minus 68.797 acres.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. I have public comment signed in on this issue. Do we need, would, do you want to do a presentation? Let's do a presentation from staff first. Yes. Very, very succinct and to the point, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Roger Pellon with Planning and Development. And to make this short and sweet, we are moving 25 acres of density that would allow three dwelling units per acre from very steep hillsides to a flat area. This is in Lemon Valley. This is not in the area subject to the flood. This does not increase the overall amount of dwelling units that may be allowed. Those areas that are moving, let me click forward. Basically, you see here in the bottom right portion, the project areas outlined in blue, you see some very steep areas, that orange area. Those are slopes that are greater than 30%. And in the upper area, you see areas that are green. Those are slopes that are less than 15%. The area plan calls for development to take place on flatter slopes, not steeper slopes. The amount of master plan and zoning areas that are changing are exactly the same. And again, we're basically moving 25 acres with three dwelling units per acre from the steep to the flat. And I'll stop there if that's sufficient.
Sufficient for me. All right. Let's take public comment. Mr. Steve Hilton.
For the record, my name is Steve Hilton. I gave your clerk pictures earlier of Patrician and Palace, which would be the main egress going out of this, this supposed deal. I believe these numbers were, were brought up in the 70s is when the original amount of housing was planned. Well, lots changed since the 70s. I started building on Bering Boulevard in 1976 when there was a 711, a fire department in the high school. Land was abundant. I also built out the entire basin of Rattlesnake Mountain, and then I built out north. But if things were simple then, you, the only complaints you had was you were going to ruin my view. Well, the roads, I wish you would all just take a field trip and go down Palace Drive and Patrician. These roads have no gutters. They have no sidewalks. They have no streetlights. These roads are narrow. People park their cars on them. It is dangerous. I live off of Snoopy. If I had a dollar for every time, and it's windy, she has the photos if you'd like to look at them. It's windy. If I, if I had a dollar for every time I had to slam on my brakes from someone flying down that hill, I could take us all to Starbucks. You hit the bottom of Patrician, it's a school zone, 15 mile an hour, single lane, both directions. It's not double lane yet. You hit the bottom of Palace, it is a flood zone. It's the place you've been seeing on TV that goes underwater each and every time it floods. A lot has changed since the 1970s when these numbers, the reason they stopped building in the 70s is because they became, they got to the point where the water towers would not support any more water. But if you, unless you revamp the complete egress, and I don't know why Estates Drive is not part of the egress. That is a straight shot, straight down through Golden Valley, straight out to the freeway. But according to the engineer here, Mr. Smith, he, he says that's off the table. But anyway, and he also ensures me that they have contingent plans on the sewage ponds. Well, after, I've been in the area since 71, and I've been in Lemon Valley since 83. This, he can, the unknown is the unknown. The only person that knows what's going to happen in Lemon Valley is God. And that water will still be there in September. Next winter's water will probably come on top of it. So he can think whatever he wants to think, but when that sewer plant fails, there is no contingent plan that Mr. Smith can come up with to save that sewage. It will poison the lake, and then we're all without water.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. I have Ms. Judy Hilton signed in.
My wife.
She not here anymore?
She had a pacemaker put in the meeting, the first meeting, so she will not be speaking.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chris Baker.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Chris Baker for the record. Manhart Consulting here on behalf of the applicant. I will be very brief. Roger did a great job just kind of summarizing this. Really, we're just flip-flopping some designations here. You have areas that are over 30% that are designated for development. As you know, that doesn't comply with your master plan or the regional plan. And on this property, there's some areas that are less than 15% that actually, for some reason or another, are not currently designated for development. So within the property boundary, all we're really doing is flip-flopping that 25 acres like Roger discussed. I think the big thing here is there's actually no increase in available density within the property boundary. I know that's a concern in Lemon Valley. That, that's not what, what the goal is here. They're allowed to do 207 units now, currently. After this, they'll be allowed to do 207 units. The great thing about this now is it actually feathers it out over the entire project site or future project site, which does open up some other access points, property off of Estates, property off of Deodor, where currently now the majority of the density is off of Palace and off of Patrician. So some of those traffic concerns and other things, that's exactly why we're doing this. You know, right now, all of the density is shoved in at the back end of an existing subdivision, and this will actually feather it out over some, some general sloping areas. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Ms. Tammy Holt Still.
Tammy Holt Still for the record. I was at the cab meeting when they suggested this, and this is right in the middle of our flooding period, and nobody wanted to listen. And it went from the cab to the planning, now to you guys. They don't need any more building out there, not at the current time. I think if they want to do additional building, any of them needed me to make sure that they are doing flood mitigation on top of it, even though it's residential homes, because every home has runoff. And coming down a hill, whether it's on a hill or in the flat, it's still all water that's going to go into that lake. And if they build at the bottom, even if they're building in the flat, they're pushing the water up, which my home is not in the flood zone, but if this building keeps up and nothing is done, my home will become, become part of the flood zone and I will have to have flood insurance. And we've had that home since 75, and we have never been in a flood zone, but yet the flood zone is approaching on us. So he's wrong in his, it's not going to do any damage, because it is. We've already know how much building has taken away, water retention areas already. Sure, the hill does not retain water, but it has pervious lands to it, so it absorbs some of the water. You put a house on there, whether it's 1,200 square foot or 2,500 square foot, it's still going to take up that space, and we don't need it. As far as I'm concerned, nothing should be done. And if you are going to do something, you need to make sure that they start paying more fees and mitigation costs and everything else to improve what's out there. Because right now, an additional 400 or 200, whatever amount of homes, times that by two cars, whenever Lemon Tribe is open, it's a disaster. I can imagine what it's going to be like whenever you add two more cars, 200 more cars to it.
Thank you, Ms. Holt Still. All right. Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse. I'm also the United States President. I do live in this area, and the whole thing started with a court statement. Yes, the lady who stated this was in court, and she knows who the rapist is and the murderer. Oh, my God. And so what happened was it broke into a big giant war. Oh, my God. The water hoses were all left inside our homes, and of course, it is called flooding. It's not from the river or it's not from the lake at all. Then I just wanted to tell you this morning, the Sparks Police said, you're all from Reno. I don't know what that statement meant, but yes, we are. Oh, my. So I just wanted to tell you, too, some of us didn't even have a chance on that property because we are seniors, you know, on that property. And I just wanted to tell you, you know, the seniors are very upset because they can't even say a word what they find out because their brains will be blown out. Oh, my God. The blood and flesh has been started in my home, too, with bullet holes in my walls. Oh, my. And I just wanted to tell you, I also saw the holes in the ceiling where I thought I saw the water dripping when we had the rain. Oh. So I just wanted to tell you, it's not a very good situation at all. That man that was standing up there near his home, his head was shot off. Oh. Because somebody said something to him about, you know, the court. Oh, my God. Because the little girl was raped. Oh. She's only four and a half years old. And I just can't take this anymore. I even put my home up for sale because I thought maybe I could move out. But there's no way because the poles and wires are all set up up there. And those wires are connected to my apartment because they thought they could move into our territory and take it over. Well, it's almost taken over, yes, because of all the bullets and blood and flesh.
Ms. Brandhorse. All right. Seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pellon, just a couple of quick questions. I know the I know the answer to this, but it's obvious that we need to get some things on the record. Is this a project?
This is not a project. This is a request to amend master plan and zoning.
So it's, it, okay. So when we do see a tentative map, a project as it were, of the layout of the streets and et cetera, can we condition that map so that we can provide for flood mitigation and ingress egress and other issues?
Yes, we can, and I would note that the drainage standards that the new development will be held to are probably substantially higher than those that were applied, you know, 40 or 50 years ago when some of the current development was done.
Exactly. Can we stop the approval that's already on the books? Is the land, there's, there's approved land to build right now, so if they brought in a tentative map tomorrow, could, they're essentially approved with that part of the process, is that not correct?
Yes, the, the master plan and zoning is currently approved. They have the right to that, you know, 207, 209 dwelling units today. This does not increase that, it simply moves it.
So if I may use an analogy, we have 25.3 deck chairs, and we're going to move them around from one side to the other, take some that are in a windy position and put them in a more desirable position. This is just moving the deck chairs around. In the, in the very, it's not the last, but it's the second to last portion of paragraph, it says, "If approved, the amendment would change 25.3 acres of the property currently zoned to general rural medium density and would change, and would change 25.3 acres of the property currently zoned medium density suburban to general rural." So essentially, essentially, this is just a density transfer. There's really no change being, in terms of overall density that's being allowed on this property, and it does allow us for some real control over what would happen.
Yes, that is correct. The density remains constant, simply moving from the steep areas to the flat areas.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Pelham.
All right. Commissioner Herman.
So in light of what Commissioner Hartung said, we really are, are not taking any way, anything away from this gentleman or the people that own this property. We're just moving things around.
That is correct.
And we, we couldn't, I mean, it would be against all of our ethics and everything to steal something from the guy. So if people are interested in slowing down his process at a later time, that's going to be their prerogative, and that will be their time to do it, is that correct?
Yes, we are neither increasing nor decreasing density. The entitlement, if you will, for the number of units remains constant.
And I'm hoping and praying that we can get a long-term plan for the flooding and, and maybe recreate some of the retention volumes in, in the subdivisions coming up in the future.
Yeah, I would simply say that the standard to which they will be held, that a future development will be held, is substantially higher than previous development.
So just expect in that stage that we're probably going to have quite a lot of discussion.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. And so, and I've seen this in Spanish Springs on a number of occasions whereby we make developers, when they come forward with a tentative map to improve the regional water flows, and so I think it would be reasonable to expect that, that the roads that potentially you would be connecting to and, and all of the, the flows, not only that come from the subdivision that could, but potentially could flow in and around the subdivision from adjoining properties that are owned by the property owner, would have to be mitigated and dealt with. And, and so I, I mean, I, I see this actually as a win. We, we were able to get a flood, a stormwater utility in Spanish Springs. We've all paid for it, but development has paid for a great deal of it when it comes to mitigating its impact. And we've, we've made them build a number of detention and retention ponds and conveyance channels and et cetera in Spanish Springs. So it's been, it, that, the, the water that, that hit Spanish Springs is the amount of water that hit Spanish Springs, but what we did with it afterwards was a, there was a huge change to that. And I, and I see that this is, you know, the, the first step, and I, I think that, that moving forward, especially after we remapped this valley and really look at what the, the stormwater is trying to do, and we're doing that right now, and by the way, that was from WRWC that we've asked that map to be created through, which is Western Regional Water, not Tomwah, Tomwah doesn't have anything to do with that. We've asked for that at, at Western Regional Water, and, and we'll be looking at these areas and what the conveyance and the, and the stormwater is really trying to do, and I think that'll give us a good map of, of what needs to be done in the future. So those are just comments, Mr. Pelham, and I, I think we're prepared to move forward, Mr. Chairman.
All right, seeing no further comments at this time, looking for a motion.
Motion. I'll do it.
Yes.
I move to adopt the master plan amendment, case number WMPA 17-002, as outlined in the staff report, and send it on to regional planning.
Let me push it one more time. There you go. I have a motion by Commissioner Hartung, second by Commissioner Jung, seeing no further discussion. I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion, please affirm your vote. Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Burke Pigler being absent. All right, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We are on to, Mr. Manager, we are on to-
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Pelham.
I heard a motion and a vote for the master plan amendment. How about for the regulatory zone amendment?
The RZA.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pelham.
Thank you, sir.
We'll take a second motion.
That was included, that was essentially included, as outlined in the staff report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I heard Commissioner Hartung make the motion that was recommended in the staff report, which begins on page four.
And include the RZA, yes.
Include the RZA.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pelham.
Thank you for keeping on us.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we are on to item 15.
Mr. Chair, item 15 is a status report and possible direction to staff on the county manager's recommended fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget, and direction to the county manager to return to the Board of County Commissioners with a tentative and final budget incorporating the approved county manager's recommendations for adoption at a public hearing to be scheduled in May 2017. Mr. Chair. A couple of us presenting this, this item. Just what, what we have before us, and you have a, a very detailed staff report. We also have the slide presentation that's being, being handed to you now by the clerk. And essentially, what we have as a recommendation is a balanced budget. Very, very pleased to present a balanced budget to you. Essentially, no, no cuts, but there are challenges with, with this particular budget, and that's one of the things we're going to talk about as we go through this. So we've divided this presentation up into, into a couple of different parts. Christine Valetich, Assistant County Manager for Finance and Administration, is going to talk about some of the challenges, kind of place some context on, on where we are, reviewing some, some of our disaster-related estimates, reviewing funding.
Okay.
Mark Mathers, our Budget Director, is going to talk a little bit about our fiscal 17 results, budget assumptions, and then I will review with you the recommendations from the county manager. So with that, I will turn to Ms. Valetich to present the first portion of the presentation.
Thank you very much. For the record, Christine Valetich, Assistant County Manager for Finance and Administration. We wanted to start off the presentation to talk about some unusual circumstances that Going into this year's budget, namely, three major natural disasters since October of 2016, and that has had an impact in developing the budget this year. So just to give an overview, the first was the Little Valley Fire, and we're showing the costs up there between labor and equipment, almost $108,000 related to that fire. Then in January, we had the 2017 flood.
Can, can I stop you right there? Sadly, our chief has left, but on the Little Valley Fire, can we not ask the state for reimbursement? And shouldn't we be asking the state for reimbursement?
Mr. Chair, as Acting Chair.
This is the Chairman, I'm sorry.
I can't see the thing though, so.
Yeah, I have a request to speak, but you're ignoring me.
So for a little bit, a little more context on the Little Valley Fire, recall that the major response to that fire was by Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, a separate district. So their expenses are much higher, and their, their expenses are covered in, in, in kind of what you're dealing with, what you're talking about, is covered through a fire, a fire management grant.
In fact, what we just signed for, $180,000.
Correct.
Yes.
So, so the, the, very limited on, on the kinds of reimbursement we would be able to, the programs that would be available to us on Little Valley Fire to the county, certainly we will, we'll seek those and see if there are any others.
Absolutely, and I don't, and I don't mean to stop you in the middle of your presentation, but I think it's extremely important that we get on the record that we're going to be asking the state for this money back. This is, it's pretty obvious that, that-
And, and my point, my point is, there are identified programs that Truckee Meadows Fire, as a fire agency, would be able to seek those.
Okay.
We would be-
Subordinate to that?
We would be subordinate to that, but we would also be seeking it through just a basic request to the state. Not, not an established program, like a fire management grant.
Okay, right, no, understood, no, I understand, but I, I think we should be, those kinds of things we should be seeking reimbursement for. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Then on January 2017, the flooding that we had in the Truckee River and around Reno, it totals about $3.6 million in damage there. You can see government damage, that's to infrastructure and facilities. There's a category there, private damage. What that was, was to be able to get emergency access to homes and-
Through property.
And private property, and as a result of the disaster, labor materials and such, 3.6 million there. And then in February, we turned around and had the North Valleys flooding incidents, and right now, labor and supplies, we say to date, we don't necessarily have all of the costs in yet, we're still receiving invoices, but that's what we've got to date. We have debris removal, road repairs of 2.6 million, some repairs needed to water control facilities and utilities, so about $4.4 million there. All combined, less any flood insurance that we may have for some of our buildings and structures, and we don't really know what that could be yet, we're looking into it, about $8.1 million. In terms of available funding, and I should say, you know, it's, the question about reimbursement is, is a really good one. We have federally declared emergencies here, so we will have a chance to get reimbursed. However, we're going to have to pay all of these costs upfront and then apply for reimbursement. So we're looking into the general fund for funding. We have about $1.1 million left in our 2017 budget in the contingency account. Our base contingency for next year would be another $1.5 million. The county has a stabilization account, this is an allowable account under NRS, and the purposes that it can be used for, or is intended for, is for stabilization of general fund revenues, should we see a shortfall, a major shortfall, or for disaster expenditures. So it's something that could be used for this purpose. And then in our capital improvement fund, we had a recent sale of water rights, so we have one-time funding of 2.8 million. So that gets us about to $8.4 million. And should costs exceed that, you know, our next backup option would be to look into the current capital improvement program and any funds that might be carried over, and then also to reduce the amount of funding for fiscal year 2018. So as I mentioned a moment ago, we have cash flow issues, and that's why we're talking about this funding. So far, county funds have absorbed costs for labor for these disasters, and it is possible that some funds may overspend in fiscal year 2017 and/or fiscal year 2018 as we make these repairs and, and pay all these expenditures. We may have to draw down fund reserves, and then prior to any reimbursement from FEMA, now we're eligible to up to 75% reimbursement, but that means that we have to do a really excellent job of documenting all of our costs that we've expended, and also for any repair work that we intend to do, those projects have to be accepted by FEMA and also by the state. So, but prior to receiving any reimbursement, we will have to pay the costs upfront, and so that creates a cash flow issue both in the short and in the long term. For the 25%, that's not FEMA-eligible. The Board will recall on April 11th, we brought to you formally the notices of intent that we filed with the state. The state does have an emergency disaster relief account, and we might be eligible, eligible for up to 50% or 12 and a half percent of that 25% match to be reimbursed by the state, but again, we would have to qualify with our expenditures and, and projects. And I mentioned a moment ago about the stabilization account. If we do draw on that account, we would certainly recommend replenishing it, because we don't know what natural disasters or revenue shortfalls may occur in the future, so it would be a prudent thing to have a plan to replenish that account. So that was just an overview of our challenges with funding disasters. I'm going to turn it over to Mark Mathers, our Budget Manager now, and he's going to walk you through the development of the recommended budget. And here you go, Mark.
Welcome, Mr. Mathers.
Thank you, Mark Mathers, Budget Manager. Thank you, Christine. So I think you're all familiar with the budget process at this point. We met in January, held meetings with departments in March, collected all the requests, and here we are in April. So the first building block to developing the fiscal year 18 budget, next fiscal year's budget, is to see how we will end up in fiscal year 17, and therefore what our beginning fund balance in 18 will be. And this is kind of a very abbreviated version of, of what's going on in 17, but overall, we expect expenses to exceed revenues by 1.6 million. That does not include unrealized investment losses, which we do book to the financial statements, but reverse if we hold securities to maturity. So it's a paper loss, and a lot of agencies actually report it as a paper loss. So excluding that, we will end the year slightly spending more than in revenues, and that's based largely on department's estimates. It wouldn't surprise me to see us actually have a bit of a positive surplus. But if that held true, we would end up with an ending fund balance in 17 of just shy of 49.5 million. The next chart then shows you what that, of that 49 and a half, 45.7 million would be available and unrestricted. As you can see, that's an all-time high if, if that held true. As you can see over the last four years, our fund balance as a percentage of expenses have been just under 15% generally. The reason why it's, the percentage is dropping is our general fund budget gets larger, so the denominator in that formula just gets bigger. So as we put together our budget in 18, we start with revenues. This gives you a summary of the change from the 17 budget, which will go into C-tax and property taxes here in a second, but there are a number of kind of pluses and minuses here, and we've kind of- But there are a number of kind of pluses and minuses here, and we've kind of noted what those are. Overall, general fund revenues are expected to increase just shy of 13.5 million, up 5.1%. So revenues are certainly moderately strong here in fiscal year '18, based on current trends. In terms of property taxes, I know we beat this issue to death. I just wanted to share with you one chart that shows the amount of abatement against property taxes in the current year budget, and historically what that abatement is. So abatement, kind of simplistically, is just the difference between what a property taxpayer would pay based on full assessed value, not full market value, but full assessed value, versus what they actually pay. And the difference is the result of property tax caps. So for Washoe County, not all taxing entities in Washoe County, but just for the county, the difference in what we would collect if we collected every dollar based on the full AV versus what we actually can collect per law is $28.7 million. So that's what, you know, based on the current property tax system, we cannot collect, but would if it was based on a full assessed value. In terms of C-tax, I showed you this chart before. You know, after several really strong years, we're starting to see C-tax revenue growth level off. That's expected, it's normal, and we're kind of in the middle of it. So we have projected for fiscal year '18 a 6% growth rate for C-tax, which is still good. So the other side of the ledger now are expenditures. And here, we've budgeted for and factored in the 3.5% COLA that takes effect July 1 for county employees. And we also see a number of county employees moving in their salary range, because we have younger employees now who are at the bottom of the range. So that adds another 0.7% to costs. We have retiree medical costs that we need to fund, and that's an increase of 1.5 million. We have our contribution to Nevada PERS. There is no, fortunately, change in retirement rates. That'd be pretty devastating. But we do, because of the increase in our salaries, have to contribute more to PERS for retirement. And then in services supplies, that's going up 1.6 million and a large part of.
Mr. Mathers. Commissioner Harton has a quick question.
No, I didn't mean for you to stop after. Complete that thought, and then we'll go back, because I have a question on retiree benefits.
Okay. And then services supplies are increasing roughly 1.6 million. A large part of that, roughly half of that, is to budget for anticipated increases to medical services for the detention center. So overall, costs are increasing 11.4 million, or 4.5%.
Commissioner Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The retiree medical benefits, how many retirees do we have that we are paying medical benefits on, Mr. Mathers? Do you know? And I'm sorry to catch you on the spot on this. Approximate, you know, within.
I believe it's 1,500. I wish John Listenski was here, but I believe it's 1,500.
Okay. Are those all police and fire, or are there some?
No, they're all county employees who were hired before the '97, '98 fiscal year, and then even after that period. So those folks, if they worked 20 years, get 100% of their medical insurance for just themselves paid for life.
Okay.
That was cut off. And then there's a second tier of those who were hired between '97, '98, and '2010, and they get a small subsidy. And then employees hired after '2010 get nothing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harton. Mr. Mathers.
So, want to give you some summary kind of slides here, just to show you what's going on and getting the budget. The slide on the left, or the chart on the left of this slide, shows you revenues and expenditures per capita. This isn't inflation adjusted, this is nominal dollars. And so you can see we're around $800 per capita, once upon a time, in terms of revenues. We're working our way back, we're just under $750 per capita. But again, not back up to the peak revenues that we enjoyed either on a total-dollar basis or per capita basis. And then, as a result, you can see what's happened with the number of full-time equivalents or basically full-time positions per thousand population. We went from roughly eight employees per thousand population. We've held steady for a number of years, and now it's six. So we are doing more with less.
Great.
So kind of summarizing the budget then. Again, we see revenues increasing 13.5 million, expenses increasing 11.4. We are making fewer transfers out of the general fund to other funds, and that change is 635,000. And then, we've been working our way to a balanced budget. In the '17 budget, we were just at a balance of 1.5 million, which is the size of the contingency account. So if we didn't touch it, we'd be okay, but we are going to touch it. But to get to a balanced budget in '18, which has been our kind of multi-year effort and goal, we need to kind of step up funding to cover that deficit, and that's 1.58. So we went to you in January, we told you we expected to have between 1 and 2 million and above base general fund dollars. Unfortunately, we're on the lower end of that range. We have $1,038,000. County Manager's going to go through the recommendation for how to deploy that $1 million in a second, but we wanted to show you what that does. Again, we have a balanced budget, unlike some, unfortunately, some other agencies in the area. We end up with very strong reserves. We think that is important. We've heard the board talk about its target fund balance. And so we're holding firm on that. Any savings we do receive from salary savings or other savings and expenses would flow into fund balance and increase that. But we will end up the year in '17 with 49.5 million. We will, this budget programs out, ending '18 with 49.5 million, so completely balanced And this shows you on a percentage basis what that would mean. Last slide for me, in terms of the total county budget, because remember, the general fund is just half of the county budget in whole, in total. Total funds, including the general fund, special revenue funds, capital funds, debt service funds, enterprise funds, and internal service funds, total appropriations are 635.8 million. That is an increase of 1% over fiscal year '17.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. All right, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I will pick up on the County Manager's recommendations on the next page, next slide. Again, just to sort of review, there are a number of unknown cost impacts that we are facing this next year and beyond. And some of those are listed here. Federal issues, state legislative issues, some county issues that are all listed there. And by definition, the full impact of those are unknown. So, on the next slide, and Mark, Mr. Mathers talked about that net total available general fund. So if you think of that as the above, the available for above base, the $1,038,124, that's the available above base that we have for this next year. So this chart outlines our strategy for dealing with that. In a typical year, we would be jumping to the green box, the scenario two, where we would be discussing how we would be distributing or recommending those funds be used throughout all of our departments. They're above base requests. But as mentioned, this is not a typical year. So the recommendation that we have, and that's represented in this recommended budget, is that we move the approximately $1 million into our general fund contingency account. And then, as we move through the year, certainly by mid-year, we do a hard-stop mid-year, but it may be sooner. We will be reviewing this as we go. We review all of these unknown costs, and at the time when it's appropriate, when we can start, and we're more comfortable with knowing these unknowns, we then jump to scenario two. So in the meantime, we're watching our expenditures for the disasters that we've outlined. We're watching our expenditures and the possibilities and all of these other unknown costs. And, as I said, no sooner than mid-year, but certainly by mid-year, we will begin the discussion of how those funds then would be used throughout the departments' above-base Next slide, again, just kind of goes through that priority process. You know, we certainly have expenses that we know we're going to have related to disasters. The second priority there listed, we will prepare for, and this is our strategy for preparing for, costs of those unknown impacts. And then, certainly by mid-year, we talk about how we fund those critical above-base enhancements that departments have requested.
Manager Slaughter.
Yes.
Commissioner Harton has a comment for any discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Manager, would it be wise to bring back to the board the option of having some type of a disaster fund set up? Where, a larger disaster fund? Here's my sense, and this is just, you know, my, sort of my, please don't laugh at me, my spidey sense. I think that they're only going to continue to grow, and they'll grow with population, of course. You know, the more land area that we cover as a region that is, you know, being utilized, the land that's being utilized, we're only going to see more and more of these things. We're only going to see more fires, we're only going to see more floods. You know, knock on wood, I'm hoping that the earthquakes that we see in the future are not some that we've seen in historic years. You know, the sevens, eights, or nines, God forbid, which would really just devastate our region. But it would be good to potentially start trying to bolster that fund.
Right. And I'm going to ask if Mr. Mathers, help me out on this, but if, earlier slide that we saw, that Ms. Vladech had talked about, the two sort of set-aside accounts, the contingency account and then the stabilization account. We are, in a sense, increasing that contingency account with this $1 million for the short term, as we need it. And certainly, we will be replenishing the stabilization account also, so.
And I'm thinking of things that are a little more fenced than contingency accounts and stabilization. And, you know, I think a contingency account is, it gives us fairly broad parameters, and stabilization accounts give us, again, fairly broad parameters, where we can use that money in the event of downturns and et cetera. I'm talking about a disaster fund, something that is, that where we lay out the parameters of a disaster in our region, and we would just, you know, it's a, I don't want to call it a rainy day fund, but just literally a disaster fund. And it's just a thought process that maybe we want to engage in that conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mathers.
So, state law, it's kind of a misnomer. The state law allows the creation of this stabilization account, and it's both a stabilization fund that lets you manage around revenue downturns of more than 5%. So it's very specific in law. And also, your emergency fund for natural disasters. They should have split it into two, as you're saying. But it is very narrowly defined. There has, the board has to make a declaration of a natural disaster to tap into the stabilization fund for that purpose. I think two years ago, you pointed out, or asked questions about the stabilization account, and here, so it happened, right? And so I think your point's well-taken, that we need to relook at the size of funding of that fund, given winter flooding issues and other things.
You know, when you talk to any good money manager, they'll tell you that you should have six months' worth of income in a savings account, should something happen. And that's, you know, that can be very difficult to do, but that, those are.
Right.
Yeah, those are the kinds of things that, you know, we, being prudent, you need to save for, but the law won't allow you to save for it. So, you know, it, you know, we, it's good to get this on record and, you know, for people to realize where we can save and where we can't. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mathers, can you go back one slide? We're going to go back one slide. So just as a reminder, that above base amount, our recommended strategy, place that, those funds into our general fund contingency account. We stay on top of and continually monitor our needs that we will have on covering our known disasters, as well as those unknown impacts. And then, by mid-year, we review that. So, then if you skip into page, the 20, yeah, there you go. There are, however, in the recommended budget, working with our departments, there were a number of requests that we were able to accommodate through the process of identifying offsets or revenue increases. So to say there are no increases is not exactly correct, because we, our departments did a very good job of reprioritizing. You've got the summary sheet there on page 27, about a total of 14 FTEs, all funds, about $3 million in costs related to that. On the next slides, several slides, and this is detailed in the handout, or in the staff report, but as a summary, you'll see summarized there for public safety. Again, these are where departments were able to show a cost offset or a revenue increase. So in the area of public safety, five FTEs recommended. And just as some examples, a new assistant medical examiner, a new forensic medical transcriber, sort of detention center, medical costs that we're planning for, as Mr. Mathers mentioned earlier, sober 24, some increase there in public safety. So, and then on the next slide, in public works, including culture and recreation, specifically parks, three FTEs. And that's a mix of funds that we're describing here. Next slide on, in our area of general government, our general government funds, three FTEs. Our planning and building consolidation project is represented here. And in the area judicial services, two FTEs specifically for the pre-trial services program. Again, couldn't fully fund all of the requests that we had from our departments, but where we had offsets, we were able to make some recommendations related to that. And then finally, I believe that's the final one, yes, in our health function, again, one FTE, a health educator, as well as some other increases that, again, related to cost offsets. What we also were able to do, and where we have an employee who is, who has taken on additional duties, and there's a request for a reclassification, and it's been reviewed and approved by our job evaluation committee, we are able to fund that, so that we can properly compensate those employees that are, have basically been working in an increased capacity and has been reviewed and approved for that. So, again, very pleased to present to you a balanced budget. Quite a few noted challenges this year. Want to give a very big thanks to all of our departments. You know, they worked very diligently to outline all of their needs, all of their priorities. In a sense, my recommendation is that, for the most part, those are put on hold for the first few months of the year, and we review where we are as we go along. You know, I think a very prudent, very conservative approach to maintain a balanced budget for the county.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'll bring it back to the board. Are there any questions at this time?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Sign in, if you will, please.
I'm doing it.
Thank you. Commissioner Harton. Let's try to move this along, too. Thank you. So, Commissioner Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry that, well, it's not all unnecessary. Are there ways that we can offset some of our costs? As an example, what I'd like to hear about is, in the jail, booking fees. I'd like to hear what it actually costs us not to detain an inmate, because we already know that that's about $110 a day, but what it actually costs us, everything from doing the mugshots, to fingerprinting, to doing the TB tests. And when an agency brings an inmate to be placed in the center, I think that there needs to be some kind of offset of cost. So I, you know, I'd like to see what that actually costs us, and can we put that money back into the program at the detention facility? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harton. Commissioner John.
I think you should take the rest of this presentation to the Regional Parks and Open Space Commission's next meeting, before you even talk to us about this at the time, because they really are part of the impetus of getting all those emails saying, "Save our parks, save our parks." So I think that needs to be explained to them, have them adopt it, and then bring it back, or have them give their feedback. The other thing is, when you come back. The other thing is, when you come back to have us finally adopt it on May 23, I would like you to connect what the citizen survey said and how that informs you, what you're saying you would like to do for above base. Because that was the reason why we did the citizen survey, and how, how that factored into the decision-making for that third go-around when we decided to go above base. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Any further comments from anybody? Mr. Manager, one thing I would have in regards to cost offsets that we've talked about a number of times before, I would continue to push, being that we have a balanced budget, that we discuss issues such as the Wadsworth Justice Court, what we're doing with that, and start making some plans to adjust the Wadsworth Justice of Court, and so that we can plan out into the future, because those would be some substantial savings. And I know Commissioner Burkligler and I see, I see differently about the Incline Village Justice Court, but what we can do to do cost efficiencies through Incline Justice Court, if we can bring those things down, or, you know, with technology. But I would like to start to look further into some of those cost offsets so that we can deal with those, you know, with budgets, because as we continue to see the growth, how do we address those more aptly? So those would be my only recommendations when you bring it back. All right, seeing no other discussion at this time, looking for a motion to approve the report. I have a motion on your, on your pad, on your pads, on your pads. You did? It's not, it's not coming up on mine, that's all. It's not coming up on mine. There it is. All right. All those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. And let the record show that Commissioner Burkligler is now back with us, so her vote.
Commissioner Hartung, I didn't record a vote for you. Thank you. There you go.
All right, please affirm your vote. All those, no changes being made, we'll accept the vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Chair, and that included the, the motion that's in the staff report, which, we will be back to you on May 23 with the tentative and final budget for adoption at public hearing on that date.
Correct. All right, before we move on to the next thing, I just want to do one quick thing. One, a few, couple people that have, are here to choose to be with us, Ms. Abby Murphy and Ms. Kayla Vera from Reno High School. Mr. Ross has sent them here to spend the time with us, so we thank you for spending your time with us and, and sitting through our, our budget hearings. They're always fun and interesting for you. So hopefully, you're gaining some information today here, and you can take this knowledge back to Mr. Ross' class. But we like having you, and thank you for attending our meeting today. Appreciate you coming.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
What did you guys do wrong?
Come, come down, come down really quick. We're going to, we're going to put you on, we're going to put you on.
Come and introduce yourselves.
You got to come introduce yourselves.
Come on, down to the podium. It'll be great.
We're going to be mean. That's how we are here at Washoe County. We are mean.
See, this is your punishment for coming. That's right.
This is your punishment. Well, no, this is proof. They can show that you've actually here. You can look at the video. Now you can see here. So just say your names really quick.
I'm Kayla Vera.
And I'm Abby Murphy.
And you're Reno High School?
Reno High School.
And you are what years?
We're seniors.
Seniors. You're in your final year. You're almost done.
Almost done.
Congratulations. A few more months. Just hang in there. All right, thank you very much for coming. We really appreciate you coming today. Thanks. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on to our last and final item.
Item 19, discussion directions staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe County or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit bill draft requests or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the chair or the board to be of critical significance to Washoe County. This would include but is not limited to AB 39. And Mr. Rogers is here.
Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, for the record, Al Rogers, Office of the County Manager. As typical, we have provided to you a Week 11 report regarding the bills that we've either tracked in the past or you've brought to light through this and other methods. Just to give you orientation to today's document, the first page are bills, both Assembly and Senate, that currently are in the past this board has given direction to support. The second page are items or, or bills that are in neutral or one that we posed, again, direction, and the remainder are bills that we're watching. And as I prefaced to you last week, there has not been a lot of movement, a lot of change in this last week, given that the deadline for coming out of the first house was last Friday. And as we stand here today, they are frantically pushing bills out before the deadline of tonight at midnight. So with that, I am happy to address any specific items, or if you'd like me to cover any of the bills that are contained within the report, I'm happy to do that.
Commissioner Burkligler. Or Vice Chair Burkligler, I should say. I apologize.
Whatever. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Rogers, I know we're at a deadline day, and we're quickly approaching a, well, I guess we aren't quickly, it's midnight tonight, isn't it, actually? Technically, it's midnight tonight. But any word on SB 462?
To the vice chair, through the chair, Commissioner Burkligler, that will come up. The Senate is scheduled to come back at 4:00 today. I've been watching the Assembly this afternoon. I think they're about, I don't want to say they're about a quarter of the way through their bills, so we'll continue to watch that. But given what we've seen so far, and again, I can't predict, but it seems like everything is following party lines and everything out of each house is, is coming out, so.
That's not good.
Not a party line bill.
That's not what I wanted to hear, Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Rogers, go back and reword your answer. Obviously, what Commissioner Burkligler does not want.
Please go back and see if we can't do something about this one.
Try again, try again. And while you're at it, go back and try again about property tax and some other things, and we're going to need you to try again.
The GID.
All right, is there any further discussion by any of the commissioners? Yes, I apologize. Commissioner Jung, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to announce to the Board of County Commissioners, especially our chair, vice chair, and our liaison to the legislature, I will be down there on Friday at 2:00 with our hired outside lobbyist, Alfredo Alonso. Not to monkey with any of your strategy or bills, I'm just going to say hi and meet and greet.
Well, first of all, you'd have to have strategy and understanding, and we don't have any of that for you to monkey with.
I thought you were saying I didn't. Me either. No. I just wanted, as a courtesy, I had, I had planned on going last week, and I couldn't make it, but I, I want to, you know, do what I say that I expect other people to do, which is report to the team and the staff that I'm not a surprise down there, and I'm not doing anything underhanded. It's, it's completely a meet and greet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, in line with that, Thursday is Local Government Day at the Legislature, and I know there will be a number of local government officials there, including, I believe at 5:30 in the evening, a reception with legislators and local government officials at the Governor's Mansion.
I will be in attendance at that. But, and I, just to point out, you know, I would, I did take members of TMFPD down there to meet legislators last week, and walked them, or two weeks ago, and introduced them, and so they could discuss their, their stances with our legislators. And they were all great meetings, very, very, very productive, but just meet and greets with, with our TMFPD staff, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burkligler.
I'm planning on being there on Thursday also.
Commissioner Hartung?
Well, that is my question. If, if we have more than two of us, will we be violating the open meeting law? Mr. Leporelli.
Mr. Chair, for all the commissioners, the open meeting law contemplates that, that members of public bodies will find themselves together at unexpected times and places. If, if there are three county commissioners together, they should not sit together and discuss the business of, of the, of Washoe County, and they should not do things that appear to be discussion and deliberation on an issue that's not on a posted agenda of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Leporelli. Appreciate that. All right. Seeing no other direction, Mr. Rogers, I think you've got all the direction you need. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the report, please. I have a motion by Commissioner Hartung. Signify by Commissioner Jung. Call for the vote.
Wait.
Come on. Please, enter.
Aye.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your vote on the screen. All right. We are on to our final public comment of the day. Mr. Manager.
Item 21 is public comment. Comment here on this item is limited to three minutes per person and may be changed depending on both on and off the commission's agenda. Comments should be made to the commission as a whole.
I have one signed in, Mrs. Kathy Brandhorse.
I haven't seen her. It's my favorite school. It's still Miss.
Miss, Miss Brandhorse, I apologize. My mistake.
That's okay. My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to let you know that the matter has been not resolved at all, and it's still going to continue until we can find somebody to help us out. The problem is, is that everybody that my neighbors, you know, are all seniors, and they cannot protect themselves because they're a little bit older than most people. And I just wanted to tell you, you know, even though you try to get rid of them because of what they know in court, I hope this doesn't continue the rest of my life. But I also wanted to mention too, you know, destroying the, what do you call them, dinosaurs, you know, is awful too. He has been afraid, you know, that he's not going to be around anymore. I did have him revived because I thought, you know, we could use dinosaurs in our area, and we know how long they can live. Millions and billions of years old. And why don't you treat them, you know, just like everybody else? They have brains, and they do have a way of showing us that they are mild and meek. And they also try to help us here in the area. But they also explained how many years ago they had, you know, with other people involved in their lives. But they are still here, and I like, you know, for somebody to stop them for using them for a piece of meat where they have to devour them. I also wanted to let you know, the children still need help in our area, and they don't deserve to be filled with bullet holes, even though they were just sitting in a chair waiting for their grandmother to arrive at home. And that was still on the property where I live. And this is really a sad thing to hear, you know, and then when I talked to him, I was not sure if that was the same little boy that I talked to a few days ago.
All right, we are on to, we are on to item 22, Commissioners and Managers announcements. Mr. Manager, do you have anything further? Commissioner Herman, do you have anything?
Aren't you glad I did it earlier?
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. I can't thank you enough. Commissioner Hartung, do you have anything? Commissioner Burkligler. Commissioner Jung, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir.
All right, with all that being said, we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. Woo, we made it. And hey, we made it through, and our, and our technology didn't fail today.